It's awful quiet.
I guess so. Well, that's a question. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So, um, how'd we do last Tuesday? Any... Pretty short meeting. Any follow-up stuff that we need to take care of? Concerns we need to review? Okay, let's... I'm sorry.
Oh, just tell them Carter will come back. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay. If there isn't anything at the meeting, I guess we'll move right on to arborist licensing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Um, a number of weeks ago, the arborist, uh, business community, if you will, invited staff to a conversation wherein they wanted to talk about changes to the current ordinances as it relates to their business. And this too was on the relatively recent heels of an accident that took place wherein one of our citizens was, was killed in a, in a, a tree trimming or felling accident. Accordingly, the request was to consider ways in which the ordinances could be adjusted in a manner that would allow, that would anticipate, I should say, and require licensing and certification to be had for businesses of this nature so that indeed businesses that come into the community on a temporary basis or that don't have the, the skills and technical expertise that would otherwise be required of a certified practitioner, um, be considered. And so after a couple of meetings with this element of our community, our, our business community, we have put together a draft that you received over the weekend, um, that, again, the primary impetus behind the draft is that a, a tightening of that certification requirement be adopted into your body of code. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do have members of that, of that dialogue here tonight that you could certainly direct questions toward, or we could, and/or we could entertain any other questions that you might have with respect to the draft. And if council is pleased, we could take your feedback, make amendments to it, and bring it forward for formal consideration to the floor.
Thanks, Carter. Questions, comments on the proposed changes?
I, I do have one minor proposed change. When I look, I'm looking at page five of our packet, um, line eighteen and nineteen, and took delivery of taking some pictures of what might be called Tree Streets, A-Tree Street. And the way this reads right now, um, you'd have to have a tree four feet from either the curb or the sidewalk. And that would pretty much eliminate the Tree Streets downtown because we don't have anywhere where we have a wide enough area to do that. So what I'm suggesting is that that language be changed where it says two feet to just make it a total of four feet, or, excuse me, two feet either way. Because that's basically where most of the trees are planted, you know, in some of the old areas in downtown. So, just a suggestion for council.
Doesn't have to be in the older areas. You look at Twenty First Street, still around about. It's the same way. Anywhere that you have a detached sidewalk is... They're only, what, four, five feet wide? So that would preclude any trees, any place that we have a detached sidewalk.
And we had a program in place, I don't know if it's still in place, where, um...
We were planting trees.
With the zombie trees, we were planting trees and maintaining them for one year at the request of the owner. Are we still doing that? That stopped at some point?
And, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, we were trying to promote detached sidewalks in newer neighborhoods as well. So depending on how you want to develop those neighborhoods, that would continue to be an issue there.
But just a suggestion for council to, to change that, to allow what's been done for years.
Since we don't talk about these things very often, do we have a sense of how accurate our projections were with the dialogue? Because it was, what, three years ago?
I think, I feel like it was pretty off. I think at, at first we'd had that first conversation that it was like we were at a critical stage. Yeah, because I, because I sat on the initial, um, whatever you call it, the group that we got, and Pete was on it as well. So we were on that, and there was this initial stage where we thought that it was going to be, uh, you know, like the apocalypse of, of trees dying everywhere. And then I think that, that got moved down further, I want to say, and I don't want to say, I can't, I don't want to talk, put a number out there, but it was closer to like five, 10% of the trees in the city were going to be faced with that.
And some were replaced, Treepocalypse?
Yeah, I was, we thought it was going to Treepocalypse is what has happened. If you remember that.
Snow, oh, yeah. Snowpocalypse?
Yeah, I forgot what the mayor's words were for the trees.
Zombie.
Zombie trees, yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, along with that, at the time, we were discussing, uh, arborist certifications and things like that. And at that time, we had even discussed having to have an arborist any time on every job site at all times. And we decided that that probably wasn't the most beneficial way for a commercial entity to run their business because of supervisory levels and, you know, if you're out planting five, five gallon plants, excuse me, if you're out planting five gallon plants or three gallon plants, that you ought to be able to go ahead and come by as the arborist or designer, spot where they are, turn them over to a lead hand and lead three guys that aren't arborists to go ahead and do the planting. That's basically a semi to non-skilled operation, and you ought to be able to watch a couple or three of those. Now, it appears that there have been issues with the larger jobs where you're pruning trees and, and/or felling them. And I don't know all of the details of the accident, but I guess my question is, was that actually somebody not following safety practices, which everybody should know, is they're fixing to cut down that limb, I don't need to stand under it type situation? Or was it just really gross negligence that an arborist would have caught?
Mr. Mayor, um, if I may have an opportunity to respond to that a little bit, I think, I think your draft would suggest that a certified arborist would need to be on-site for the aerial operations and for the felling of trees. The other thing that I'd like to point out, although I'd like the attorney to comment a little further if that's okay, is that we do have the daughters of the individual that was killed in that accident here tonight, and they could certainly address the specifics of how that accident happened and what some of the issues were, if it please us to counsel to, to hear that.
Were you wanting to talk about that and tell us that story?
I'll, I'll tell you the story. My father had these two men coming through the yard, or coming through the neighborhood, and they were knocking on doors and telling people they could cut down, um, trees and do yard work. And, um, my dad at the time was eighty-nine years old, relatively, pretty good health, still living at home. And so, uh, he, they said they could cut down his sixty-foot cottonwood trees. And so he called me up and told me about it, and I knew nothing about tree cutting. And I said, "Oh, okay, sounds like a deal, Dad." So the next day, uh, they started cutting down the tree, and I, I do have some pictures on my cellphone if you want to see them. My dad was out there watching, which he shouldn't have been, so if someone was a true professional doing this, they would have never let him and his companion be back there. And they were back there, and my dad being of, these people are on my property, I'm going to watch them, make sure they do it right, and, uh, the tree, the rope snapped. And my dad had a bum knee and tried getting up and getting out of the patio. His companion got up about ten, fifteen seconds before him. She made it out, but she got kind of beat up by the limbs. And it took him down, um, broke his knee, his replaced knee, broke his femoral, uh, or his femur, and damaged his femoral artery, and, um, his head hit the bricks, um, to trim around the garden. And, uh, he died of bleeding to death in his thigh because he was, um, on eloquence, basically the only medicine he was on. And, uh, uh, he died ten hours later. He went to death in his thigh. And that, he, there was nothing we could have done about it. But the one guy, uh, the police department, they had taken blood for both the guys, and one was on mouth. And, um, uh, they, they didn't know what they were doing, and they were doing it just to make some money. And the police officer had told us, um, you're not going to get no money out of them. They weren't insured at all. And he said one lived in, um, a building that was like his workshop, and the other one lived in a broken down old trailer out in the sticks. And so, um, my dad wouldn't have been back there, but you know, if we would have had a professional doing it, and it was horrendous, it took seven men to get that tree off my dad. And he, I'd never heard my dad scream. He was a very strong man, a decent mechanic, but he screamed that night in the ER when they moved him. It was, it was horrific to see, to listen to your dad scream. And I do have, I know Barbara talked about pictures, I've got big pictures that I blew up. And it, they're amazing. I mean, we went back there, it looked like the tree had just blown up. I mean, it was, the tree was all over. Ruined the roof, the roof had, had to be replaced, electrical box out in the back had to be replaced.
Yeah.
We had no electricity for two to three weeks. All the food in the freezer and bars were gone. His companion couldn't stay in the home anymore. It was great ass.
Sorry for what you folks went through. It does sound horrific and, uh, makes a pretty strong case for doing this, doesn't it?
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for these folks about what they went through?
Carter? Do you mind if I have the attorney discuss some of the other requirements as it pertains to insurance as well, if you wanted to suggest?
And I assume these gentlemen were not in violation of our ordinance as they are going to do it? Is it correct?
I would think so.
Mr. Henley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Did the, I think the, the people in this city deserve a lot of credit. They came to us, and they really asked us, I'd had a proposed draft of an ordinance for them with certain levels of insurance, and they said, "Oh, my gosh, we just don't think that's going to be enough." This is something unheard of, that they would ask city government to, or any type of government, to basically raise their requirements, or raise their standards. But they asked not only to raise the insurance to one million per occurrence and to two million dollars or three million dollars in aggregate, to two million dollars a year, but they also meant, but they also made workers' compensation insurance too, because this is a dangerous job, and they think that all of the people working in our profession should have that, like, downsized, uh, protection. And so we added that in there too, which is something which is pretty unusual. But they were in agreement with that, and so they were thinking about this pretty hard, and they were talking about kind of their ethics requirements under this international society of arborist culture, and that they don't kind of have that obligation in their own mind to do this, and they were hoping that it could be codified. And so we went ahead and we put that in there for your review and consideration. And they also were, again, requesting that we, we make that a certified arborist, uh, arborist be on-site during any type of aerial procedure, which would include any type of tree felling. And it takes basically three years to become certified by their international review group. And so in that interim, we, we fashioned it so that every year, uh, someone who wants to be licensed can be licensed, so you can get the experience while you're working for someone else. And you can get, and then apply after three years, in fact, after three years, you need to apply an intended certification from this, uh, this oversight group, which at least within the room that we had, and we had probably fifteen, twenty, twenty-two people there, uh, an amazing showing, I thought, from this, I would think would be a pretty small contingent of, uh, people working in the city of Casper. But they all were in agreement that this was a good idea, and that they wanted to raise their standard to this effect. There was a little bit of give and take as to how often or how much the certified individual would have to be on-site, but the consensus by far seemed to be, anything goes, we have people in the ER, or we have crews that have been filled, we should have an arborist there, certified arborists to, uh, to make sure that things are going okay, and we don't have these situations like Barbara was describing.
Questions for John? Steve?
I didn't see it specifically in here, a private individual cut down his own tree?
Yes, that is in there, that we, 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 basically our instructions, yeah, our instructions aren't just licensed, uh, licensed operations.
And I assume all of the people attending the meeting had an opportunity to review the language?
We had provided this to them, and so they looked at it, and then we've sent it to them since. And we've had a few comments come back, uh, and they've been positive, so, so far so good.
Mr. Mayor?
Any questions, or comments?
I, I don't have a question for John so much as, but I, I'd kind of like to testify in favor of this. Uh, I would be willing to bet that other than any commercial arborist in the, uh, the room, uh, I've probably done more chainsaw work and more trimming and more of all of that kind of stuff than anyone. Uh, and I did a lot of that for a lot of years, a lot of years, without really having gone through any training. Having in later years gone through a lot of that training, uh, and I look back at what I used to do, and I'm terrified, you know, by it. And, uh, uh, and I really think that this kind of standard, th- this is a good thing. This, this needs to be done. I just really think, and it, you know, looking through it, it looked to me like it was pretty tightly drafted, and I would really compliment John on, on that I did a good job covering the bases that needed to be covered. It still allows, like you were worrying, people to do theirs at home if they want to, but, you know, where most chainsaw accidents happen with sixteen-inch home lights, Susie Hillmaker chainsaws. But if people want to do that to themselves.
So obviously, we have a similar licensing process for contractors within the city. Who would be necessarily, um, like how those, uh, like their proof of experience and things like, who will be reviewing those and approving them, maybe denying them, listening to appeals? Because obviously for contractors, we have the Contractors Licensing and Appeals Board, um, so we kind of have like an established, you know, group of experienced individuals. Would we maybe rely on a group that's already established, or would we essentially make a new board to be reviewing these applications?
John?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Council. The way we have it currently structured is that indeed, um, there will be some type of review, review process. The clerk's office will basically undertake the paperwork part of this, so that would be their office, and they will look and they'll make sure that the people are insured, they'll make sure that the people have taken their tests for the first three years, that it's administered by the extension office. And then after that, they have a certification from the, uh, the international group. With respect to the appeal though, uh, say that, and, and what we're talking about here is not so much just in the licensing process, uh, at least in my contemplation, but if someone should be found to be violating, uh, kind of the requirements of the ordinance, and therefore they're going to lose their licensure. And then basically, the, uh, the clerk or the, uh, the director of, uh, the marksman operation would say, you're going to have your license hold, they would have a period of time to appeal, but appeal, be an appeal directly to the city council, so it would be similar to the one we're talking about with respect to the creative limits. Again, it would be relatively quick, you know, because it's a, it's a people's life and that type of thing. They certainly could go to, uh, the appeals board, and maybe the contractors would even undertake that, or, uh, the contractors could have a representative from the, uh, the arbitrist to, uh, to be on the airport, I don't know, but, but in any, that's the way it's structured right now.
Okay. Do you have any reason, John or Carter, to believe that there are people who have been basically making their living as, as arborists without these credentials who would have to shut their businesses down? Or do you feel like the people who are involved are really the people who are doing this in Casper professionally?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I, I don't think I've heard that word, they thought that business would shut down. I do think that there is some concern when they were kind of in that give and take process that Mr. Henley outlined, that they, they might be limited on how many jobs they could do at any one time, meaning if you're going to do multiple aerial operations at once throughout the city on a given day, and you only have one person that has the credentialing, if you will, that basically that person has to show up to that site, give the instructions, the felling operation occurs, then that person would have to move to the next site, do the same thing, meaning they wouldn't be able to do simultaneous operations if you only had, say, one. So there's kind of a bottleneck, but I think that that's just more encouragement to get more people on your crews credentialed so you can do more operations and have a bigger operation. Does that answer your question?
I think so. And, and, and the current businesses where this is what they do all have, must have at least one person with those credentials.
Mr. Mayor, that's in fact the, the feeling that I've got from at least the people that were invited. Of course, we didn't invite, because we don't know who they are, the, the people that, you know, aren't licensed at all, and they're just walking through people's neighborhoods and asking for work, obviously, but that's exactly what we're trying to eradicate at the same time.
And, Mr. Mayor, that is one thing, that with all of these regulations, people in our public still have to ask the right questions. Because if they don't ask about licensing, if they don't ask about insurance, and if they don't ask about bonding, this situation can happen again and again. So people have to be vigilant and ask their questions.
Any other questions?
Maybe once we get to the point where we're actually getting close to enacting this, maybe could we work along with whatever department it may be, whether it's Fisher Cortez, or as far as maybe pushing this out there, as far as, hey, are you having work done on your trees? Make sure you ask about their city license. Because if they obviously have the city license, then we know they have the insurance, we know they have the experience. I mean, that kind of takes that onus off of the citizen having to say, hey, can you show me insurance papers? Can you show me certification papers? Can you show me your experience? That takes away, because we've already vetted those things for them. But if we let them know, especially at this time of year, hey, you need to ask for their license and make sure that they are licensed to do this type of work within the city. I, I mean, I don't know how we do that, I don't do marketing or advertisement, but I would think there's some way to kind of get the word out on a general level.
Steve?
Couldn't we even have a, uh, section of webpage or whatever? I, it might take up a lot of space, but I mean, if we had it, once the licenses were put out there and we knew they met the, uh, the requirements, and you could just have those on there and keep it updated as the... People can go right on the city website, look at it and say, okay, well, you're obviously licensed and good to go, or if you're not on the list, then I'll look for somebody else.
Or if we ever had another major event, and we do have these things happen in the spring, to make a big splash that these are the people that have licenses to do those works. John?
Does the state require licensing?
Mr. Mayor, I, just following along with what Councilman Frio was suggesting, I don't think it'd be that bad of an idea if we could somehow list, these are the licensed general contractors, these are the licensed plumbers, these are the licensed electricians, so that people could just, if they were inclined to. Uh, you know, and having told you about my work doing this stuff, I used to call myself Phantom Firewood, and I'd tell people I'm here today and gone tomorrow. And if that didn't warn them that they were getting what they paid for. But, you know, having that sort of background, you know, I, I really think these are good ideas. But I, I like that idea of having a list that someone could easily check, you know, for any of those licensed people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I kind of look at this a little bit like we look at our construction straights also. You know, if you, if you own or have an electrical company, the owner may not have to have a master's license, but somebody within the company has to have a master's license. And the same thing with a plumbing company, somebody has to be there that has a master's license. And everybody else, you're working on his license. If he loses that license, the company shuts down. So I, I think it was a good idea.
And the public deserves that protection. Any other comments? Are people okay with us, um, moving forward with this? Looks like a lot of work went into it.
Charlie, we make, are, are we okay with changing that? Are we okay with changing that width from two feet to four feet, or, well, down to two feet, I guess?
Because that's actually, actually, that was the original language, and then it went from...
Okay, yeah.
But is everyone okay with that change? That doesn't give anybody any heartburn? Okay, all right. Okay. And then, uh, with the re- rest of the language, are we ready to move forward and take this to the floor? Okay? Thumbs up? Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Okay. Context-sensitive agreements with Whiteout on Poplar Street Bridge. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council is aware that this, uh, aspect of the Poplar Street reconstruction has been underway for some time, and that indeed, uh, you've been anticipating this conversation as it relates to context-sensitive amenities. You'll probably recall that Whiteout does make available funds to help with those kinds of amenities when they have major projects, of which this would certainly be one. The problem is, is that, as you might expect, the amount of dollars available for these kinds of amenities are limited and don't avail themselves to a full context of improvements that, you know, many town and city councils would like to see with these kinds of projects throughout the state. And so that certainly would be the case here. You have seen in your memo that we sent out over the weekend that indeed we have some ideas that, uh, we, we would like you to consider. The, uh, Platt River Parkway Trails Trust has a request as well that they would like you to consider and have even been willing to provide, uh, funding to help with that type of amenity that they're proposing. But the bottom line is, your direction would be helpful and, uh, you know, very timely as well in that we get to build this in to the design aspect of this project here sooner than later, which, which is the best approach for a project of this scope and size. What I thought might be helpful would be to go over the scope of the project, first of all, so you can kind of see the, the breadth of what we're talking about. Review what it is that we, uh, see as opportunities for us, and, uh, and take your feedback and direction and go from there. If I could get Andrew to kind of go over the scope, and, uh, we'll, we'll talk about amenities after that.
Your Honor, Council, this is called Person Poplar, and that's some of the misnomer, because it goes all the way from Person Poplar all the way to the northern boundary of, of Collins. But they're going to completely redo this intersection. Right now, it's got two lanes going in each direction. For example, northbound traffic on Poplar Street is going to have two dedicated left turn lanes, two through lanes, and a dedicated right turn lane. So it's got two lanes to five lanes just for northbound traffic. So as you can imagine, that is going to widen that approach drastically, and all these other approaches get changed as well. They're redoing the bridge over North Poplar Street, putting pedestrian amenities, they're putting a ten-foot walk on the upstream side, a five-foot walk on the downstream side, and then putting a center turn lane all the way down Poplar Street towards Collins. So that is the project limit. A lot of work going on at this intersection, a lot of work going on the bridge, and the complete resurfacing, and additional turn lane down Poplar Street towards Collins. This is a big project for Whiteout. We've already got a Collins agreement in place with Whiteout that we have to redo our utilities, we've got sanitary sewer and... We've got sanitary sewer and water. We've allocated one and a half million just to relocate and restring those utilities as part of this project. We've got about five hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and some thousand enhancement funds. Council also allocated five hundred thousand and one ten sixteen. I pulled a hundred thousand of that out this fiscal year just to design for landscape architects to help design and oversee that construction. So you've got about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of firm construction permits that you could allocate to this project corridor. And you've got a shopping list essentially in your memo.
Questions for Andrew? Steve?
I assume they're going to the west with the widening of Poplar.
They're probably gonna, they're gonna, it's, it's gonna be a combination of both. I don't think they're just gonna expand all over the west. We've got a lift station in here that we have to move. So it's not, the entire widening is not going to occur just one side.
Are we gonna have to rebuild the intersection there at West Yellowstone then? Which we just did, what, two years ago? Where West Yellowstone ties in, just to the south of the river.
Where the OID is.
You're talking about, right here?
Yeah.
Oh, definitely have to revamp that, but the island itself is gonna stay. No, so it'll, it'll be transitioning back into that intersection.
And they're gonna take care of all of that?
Same kind of question over on Midwest. We'll be putting that out to bid within the next year or two, right?
Our next bid actually goes to Walnut Street down here. And then, then we have to allocate additional funding to go from Walnut to Poplar.
But we have some design work already done on the...
We do, and we give them YDOT, we give them YDOT those design layouts. So we're gonna, but they're accommodating as best they can knowing our design, ultimate design.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Andrew, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you mind talking a little more detail what's gonna happen at the intersection of First and Poplar? We talked about at one point a protected turn into the downtown, et cetera.
Right, and like I said, right now, you've got two lanes going northbound, you've got two lanes going southbound. For northbound traffic, you're gonna have two left turn lanes. Similar to the intersection that Sackman and Curtis or Bankmore Road has got two left turn lanes coming off of that. Two left turns to get onto West Borough Street, two through lanes to continue on over the Grow Road, and then a free ride for traffic to head eastbound into downtown Castor. So...
Which is critical, having...
So you're going from two lanes to five lanes, just in that one leg of the intersection. Now, there's still gonna be two lanes going southbound, but...
Mike?
I forget what the term you just used for the right turn there, but will that be like a dedicated right turn lane?
There'll be a dedicated right in the, in the fact that, if there was a wet...
Would it be like what I would, what I would refer to as a sweep?
It's not gonna be a sweep. It's not gonna be a sweep.
Is that YDOT?
They are, they are now running out of room. But it'll, it'll be a, a right turn, dedicated right turn traffic, so...
So the right hand northbound lane in that?
Yes.
That's two northbound lanes, the right hand one?
Still the vernacular I would use, yes.
So it won't look like Collins and Poplar where there's that island that guarantees it?
Right, you're, you're, you're talking about this type of sweep. They don't have that kind of room to make that, that kind of sweep.
Could we encourage them to get that kind of room and do something with sweeps?
Well, then you start talking to McMurrays and taking out storage buildings and all kinds of additional stuff.
That's kind of why I was thinking that most of this expansion through there has got to go to the west with the closeness of the bank there with Ware Parts, with the Mini Mart, and with Home-Ax is there isn't any room to the east to start putting a bunch of traffic and everything there.
Well, and I, I think that you're right, but I don't see that, those places being quite as critical of a bottleneck as the desirability of having a right turn sweep there on First Street.
I think if you can get the traffic, wants to turn left into their dedicated lanes, through traffic, it, it's gonna increase the capacity of this intersection drastically. Now, if you try, if you, if you try to walk that grade across there, you've got quite the jock. But we do have to get the trail system that they can get to access.
Andrew, while we're talking about this area, the Rails of Trails, of course, we lost a section of it with the demolition for the State Office Building property there. Now, that's gonna, that's gonna continue on over to Midwest at some point and be along Midwest, is that correct?
Yeah, and in fact, the State Office Building has that connection going through their campus tying into Midwest. And then we had a dedicated, actually a dedicated bike lane going all the way to Midwest and tying into Poplar onto this trail network.
And was there any serious consideration of, I, I asked this question before, but it's such a short stretch between Midwest and Yellowstone, there's no way to stay on that, on this side of Poplar, huh? Because it's all private, I suppose, huh?
We could go down this way.
That's what I mean.
And, and there will be a sidewalk down there. But once you get here, you still have to get onto the trail system. And this has always been developed.
Yeah. Yeah, right, because if you get, if you get across the bridge, there's no easy way to get down to the trail from there.
The nice thing about this intersection is signalized, so they, they've got a protective crossing right there.
Yeah. Doesn't really help you to get across West Yellowstone, because you still have to get over to the bridge, over the bridge to get to the trail.
Right now, this has got no pedestrian amenities on it, right? I, I see people walking, I just heard them, they're going, oh.
Oh, it's, it's, it's gets...
And it's incredibly dangerous, because at least now, they're gonna have at least pedestrian movement on the bridge itself.
Well, I mean, it was a long wait, but what they've done with the overpass is, you know, was so badly needed and it's, it turned out really nice.
Charlie, we might, there, there might be a possibility someday to make a glorified overleaf to get from the white sidewalk on this side, come down here and do this, or come down here, something like that. With, that way you could ride across here and still get to the trail.
Because we have, because there is, there is land on the west side of Poplar there that maybe could have a trail. Or, or is that gonna be a sidewalk all along there on the west, Andrew? That ten foot wide?
Across the bridge itself.
What about between?
Then they're gonna make the connection to the oil, oil there. But I think the rest of the balance is gonna be a traditional five foot white sidewalk.
But there will be a sidewalk there, so you could, you could cross Midwest and just ride the sidewalk if you wanted to, yeah. Does see another hand?
And there'll be a five foot sidewalk on the east side of the bridge. So if somebody could ride a bike across that and kind of poach their way through Jonah's parking lot down to the trail, maybe?
That could.
Couldn't they?
That could.
He just said that they were gonna tie in the sidewalk into the derrick, and if you do that, you've tied into the trail system.
So we have some decisions to make then about which items on this list we would want to prioritize and, or, or even include or not include. So, um, comments on the options that we have in front of us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, one of my priorities would be a right turn sweep to help people get back to downtown. One of the things that I would be curious about there is what the traffic survey shows. If there, if there would be more, if they had only one left turn lane instead of two left turn lanes, take that space, turn one of those lanes into a right turn sweep and then have one left there, you know, that might be something that they could talk about. And I realize that, you know, this is YDOT and they, I won't talk about that. But, uh, now that would be one of my priorities, is to try to make it easy for people to turn and come downtown. But I realize that's, you know, likely a non-starter. But, you know, I'd like to keep that idea rumbling around out there.
I, I assume that this configuration is based on accounts that they've taken, Andrew, as far as what's needed.
Your Honor, Council, I, I, I assume so too. I've not been privy to their data. All I know that that's what they're planning on doing is, is two lasts, two throughs and a dedicated right.
Well, maybe we should make sure, okay, can you?
Nope.
Because we have some other suggestions in addition to the list that Andrew gave us and Mr. Easton and Mr. Tyler are here. Would you, would you be interested in giving us your perspective on how you'd like this to play out?
Love to. We're lawyers, we like to talk. Your Honor, there's a council. My name is Keith Tyler and Eric Easton. We're both members of the Ploton River Trails Trust Board. Angela couldn't be here tonight, so we're gonna try to fill in for her best we can. You know, you've mentioned things that we've been talking to YDOT about on this project to try to make sure that they're accommodating the trail concerns that we have. We do have discussions, we had discussions with YDOT about circulating back the trail on this side and on this side. Last time we talked with YDOT, they were looking into how they might be able to accomplish that on the east side of the bridge. But it would really behoove the trail area if we're gonna have the bridge crossing there to have a way to get back to the trail here. Poaching through Jones Parking Lot really isn't the solution. Long term, we see this area as being a very heavy pedestrian, bicycle, trail use area, because you're connecting OID to the Collins, you're connecting our river trail system. And this is what we view as a once in a lifetime opportunity to address this bridge crossing. We'll never get a chance to do anything with this bridge again. You can't add anything to it in the future, it's just gonna be cost prohibitive. So what we do today is gonna be what we're living, we'll live with for our lifetimes, probably. So we, we have been working for years on a trail on this side of the river to go from First Street to Poplar. We can't go underneath the bridge at Poplar because of the drainage systems that are, are just massive and there's no way to get around them. So eventually, we would like the ability to direct people that are on this, this path on the river on this side to the bridge to cross over here and come around and get on this side of the river. Or potentially, they can go back here to the light intersection at Midwest, but right there. But to do that, we really would like to see this be not just five, but ten feet. If you've been on the First Street Bridge, that's about a five foot wide sidewalk. If you go over the new bridge that they just put over the railroad, on the east side is five foot. If you go through there on bike, there's really not room for somebody to pass shape from the old direction. So five feet is, is a bare minimum and it doesn't really fulfill the long term plans and objectives of the trails organization. So if there's any way to make that ten feet, we would sure love to see that happen. We also, again, feel like this is the one and only opportunity we have to make a really, not iconic bridge necessarily, but attractive bridge, one that will stand out a little bit more than just an ordinary bridge. The city recently, not recently, it's been quite a while now, built a bridge out on Robertson Road. And for that bridge, the city got involved and added some money to make that a nicer bridge. They added bump outs to it, really do add to the desirability of that bridge. They allow someone to actually stop on the bridge, get out of the way of traffic and appreciate the river, sit down for a while or just stay and look. And I think we sent you a memo, Angela did, with pictures of the Robertson Street Bridge, so you might have that for reference. But those bump outs are really, I think, a nice amenity and trails organization strongly feels that they ought to be an amenity added to this bridge. And we're willing to put our money where our mouth is on it to help that happen. We've been trying to get out of YDOT a preliminary cost estimate to put in four bump outs and try to get a time on when they have to have those funds committed and available in order to incorporate it into the design. We've had two meetings with YDOT on it, haven't heard back from the, either the cost or the time, but they've committed to, to tell us that. We're in the process of doing our annual fundraising. We had a big event in August, a festival. Raised thirty-five thousand dollars to do that project that we have committed to help with these bump outs. And we're committed to help raise up to a hundred thousand dollars to go towards bump outs. The cost estimates on those range from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. I think Andrew feels like four bump outs are gonna cost two hundred thousand. If that's the case, excuse me, we might only get two bump outs. But that still would be an attractive feature, we think, if they're centered on the bridge, again, giving someone the opportunity to step aside, enjoy the river and get out of the way of traffic. We'd still like to shoot for four, when we get the cost estimates from YDOT, we'll be a little better feel. But if the council's so inclined, we're willing to make a commitment to help raise that a hundred thousand dollars to go towards bump outs. The other aspect of widening the bridge from five to ten feet, that's gonna have to be on council, figure out a way to do that if, if they feel strongly about it. We think it's a good long term improvement to make now. But again, we all understand that the funding is scarce. Other amenities may be able to be added later. Widening the bridge can be...
So Keith, if we did approve a ten foot walk on the east side of the bridge, what would be the argument for ten feet on the west side of the bridge? Because that's not really connecting any trails, yeah?
You know, and you're gonna be on a bridge and you're gonna be crossing paths with oncoming traffic. Five feet, with the way they put the guard rail on those, you really don't wind, wind up with five feet clearance. Again, I encourage you to go walk across the bridge that's over the railroad.
But you'd think there'll be bike traffic on both sides of the bridge? Even though the trail is on, the trail connection would be on the east side?
I guarantee you there will be. People will use the ability to get onto the, this side of the bridge from this trail connection, go over here to do loops, to do whatever. You've just, they're doing it now without the pathways and that, but if you put it there, it'll be a lot more use to it.
Take Mike and then Bob.
Well, Keith, if you were to guess, would you guess that there would be more bike traffic and heavier foot traffic on the west or on the east side? Because looking at this and, and thinking about how to make this whole thing work there, it looks to me like it would make more sense to have a ten foot, have a wider sidewalk on the east side, a narrower sidewalk on the west side. But frankly, and I'm gonna say it, in typical YDOT fashion, they looked at it and thought, oh, that'd be the best idea, we're gonna do it, but not best idea.
No, no.
I'll be nice.
If you had to pick one side, I would probably agree the east side is gonna be the heavier usage side. Just because of what's coming from downtown and, and the possibility of getting a trail on this side of the river eventually.
But you're right.
You know, there's no one as brilliant as the person that agrees with you. I think you're just the smallest guy.
I still think you really, if you can find the funding, need to try to do both. Because we can't predict today all the ways that people are gonna wanna use this in the future, but I can just see them being on both sides of that bridge equally, that is heavy.
Yeah, just a couple of items. If I recall it, the Mills Crossing of the River, that quote pedestrian sidewalk is, you might call it five feet, but there's also a sign on each end of it, dismount your bike and walk. And I don't see many people dismounting, but...
It's, it's, it's intimidating to pass somebody on a bike.
It is. The other one you've got that I guess is in, probably in some opposition to the east side, the, the west side of the bridge is already misaligned. If, if you remember going down this street, coming here, you actually pull over about a half a lane to get onto the bridge. And what they're doing is saying this side is stationary, well, relatively stationary, including five feet. This side becomes ten feet wider and you end up with the lanes going straight through there. Because I've had people pull in there and just pull right in front of me, thinking there's supposed to be a mislink. So that will address that kind of issue, but overall, the project's a winner.
Okay. Ken, Steve, Kristen?
A couple of them.
A couple of them. One, you mentioned, the reason why you can't do a path on the south side is because of drainage underneath the bridge, is that correct?
You can't go underneath the bridge.
Right, because of the drainage, or?
Right in here, you know, we go underneath the bridge on this side, but we've looked at trying to do, going underneath the bridge on this side, we can't do it.
But if they're gonna redo the entire bridge completely, right, is that correct?
That I couldn't tell you, I don't think they're taking out the existing bridge structure, if I'm not mistaken, Andrew.
I don't think YDOT knows yet, they're still struggling, this bridge is getting pretty wide. And they're trying to determine if the existing structure can stay and they can build off of it, or they just need to get it loose and, and put in a brand-new structure in.
They can't deliver or something.
That's what they're looking at, they can manage that.
Wow.
But the drainage part of that is not related to the bridge.
The, we have, there is massive storm servers that come, and YDOT is actually replacing those as part of this project at discharge, right in here.
Okay, so they're, if they redid the whole bridge and they're redoing that, there's no way to work that out to put the path underneath it?
Not great.
I'm just, I don't know, I, I, I've never looked underneath that bridge, so.
If we get the path down to the level that's underneath the bridge, you're gonna be right in the path of the storm drain.
Okay.
I think you have, have your issue too, I think it gets a lot narrower like, like it is on Bryant Stock Trail.
Gotcha, okay. And then, I guess, if I may, out of just curiosity, the, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know anything, but with put in here, is there any way to widen this path where you could just come off the bridge and just come down onto the path, but it's wide enough that you wouldn't run into somebody and it just kinda like how you do the interstate, you just come on into it? Is there any way to do that so you don't have to do a loop or go into Jonah? You could just ride your bike and either go straight or just kinda come down and get back on that path right there? Just, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I just was thinking.
There's probably several different ways to decide. It's essentially an intersection, because you've already got the path from the east-west and you're trying to bring traffic from the bridge onto it. So it's either gonna hit it in a T-intersection, and it could be going either way, so it doesn't really make a lot of sense just to force directing that way. It's gonna be easier to direct it to a T-intersection so they can go either right or left.
Gotcha. Steve?
Well, just a suggestion, I mean, I'm all about doing the, sorry, Steve won. The, I think it should be wider on both sides of the bridge. And just a suggestion, I know we look back at like King Boulevard and obviously Poplar's gonna be busy and cutting the crosser. I see that being an issue quite often right now, if people wanted to go across it with the amount of traffic. But if, if that sidewalk's ten foot wide on both sides of that bridge, if you basically have a ramp that goes down and ties you into the trail on the north side, and we talk about not being able to get under the south side, why don't we just put a ramp on both sides of the north side? So that, let's just say you come off Yellowstone or Midwest and you go, you wanna get to the other side of King Boulevard, it's a little bit out of the way. But if you just ride or go up the sidewalk, cut down underneath the bridge, come back up on the other side and then go back down to King Boulevard and you're on that, you're on that trail system on this side. And it takes care of it, you're, you're simply adding, if you follow what I'm saying, you're just simply adding another ramp on the opposite side of Poplar Street. But it, essentially, you could stay on the trail side on the north side of the river or you can just go underneath the bridge, get on the other side of the, the Poplar and go back to King and safely get onto the other side of Poplar Street, if that makes sense. I don't think it'd be that much.
Any more comment on that idea?
Your Honor, councilman, it makes sense to me, it's just ownership of that property is something that YDOT would have to work with.
Did you get to go first? No, Kristen was waiting.
The four hundred and twenty-six thousand that was in the memo that says to widen it ten feet, that's only one side, correct?
Your Honor, yeah, councilwoman, you're correct. And I got that cost direct from YDOT. I said, alright, well, if I wanna widen it from five feet to ten feet, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty bucks. And I don't know how they could get down to that accurate of a number, but that's what was shot back at me in the cost of the bump outs. So I asked the same question, alright, I don't know, we don't know, how big, you know, two seventy a square foot, two hundred and seventy-five bucks a square foot, that's what they told me.
Yeah.
So I did, I went and took a look at Robertson Road and said, alright, each one of these, each one of those are costs around forty-five, fifty thousand bucks.
But it says both sides.
It says both sides.
And that, that's just what I wasn't sure.
Says on both sides.
Yeah, so they've already committed through ten feet on one side.
Okay, so it'd maybe be like two hundred and something?
No, 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 this is the additional.
Okay, dang it, I was.
No, 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 that is, that is the additional cost to widen that one side from five feet to ten feet, so you have ten-foot walks on both sides of the bridge.
So ultimately, end of the day, if we decide to, if we decide that the ten feet is a priority, we don't even need to talk about the other projects because we basically just maxed out, once the hundred is out, we're at four eighty-nine, and if this is four twenty-six.
No, no, you've got five eighty-nine.
Oh, okay, that's after the hundred.
Yes, you have five hundred and ninety thousand, five eighty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that needs a question.
That's, that's still the majority of it.
I think Steve sees this, he does.
I think we need to step back and start looking at this realistically. We don't have an unlimited supply of money, there's a bunch of wishes out there, there's a bunch of likes along there for the four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to put an extra five feet on the west side. If we can get them to swap east versus west on the ten and the five, we ought to be happy with one ten and one five. With the ten on the east side of the bridge, you can use that four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to put your loop in down there. You can actually even put your bump outs in for that and put on all of your lights and trees and stuff. And you all break even and you're all within budget. And you get the whole project, but you don't get ten feet on both sides.
And the other argument is you can add lights later. Steve?
Well.
Well, the only thing I was gonna add to that is the fact that whatever we do to this bridge, I agree, we're doing it now. It's not something that we wanna go back and try and add on to later. I mean, that's, you can add trees later, you can add lights later, but trying to fix a bridge or add to a bridge later is gonna be difficult.
It's impossible, really. Mike?
In terms of making some kind of a loop or a clover leaf or something like that on the north side of the, the bridge there, to get from the grade of, that you're at with the bridge, down to the grade of the trail, that's.
Fifteen feet maybe?
Yeah, that's not like you can just take a hard turn, do, do you?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we, if we start off and just go to the.
Well, on the west side, yeah, there's plenty of, but on the east side.
On this side, the trail's up a lot higher right here by the building, so you're not talking fifteen feet to get to there.
Okay, so that, engineer-wise, that would be doable there?
I believe so.
Now, that's an amenity that can be added later too.
Well, yeah.
That, that, that we can work on in the later data for another.
But one of the things that really concerns me, I don't see the idea of telling bicyclists and pedestrians, well, our preferred way for you to get across the four-lane busy street or a five-lane busy street like Poplar is, well, use the stoplight there at Midwest, King and, and Poplar and do that. I, I agree, you know, I don't find that to be a real desirable thing, I'd like to avoid.
Well, that's been my concern, which is why I was asking about the east side connector between Midwest and the trail, but that's not an easy thing to arrange.
Yeah.
Kristen?
Just a really quick point to make, the proposed items that we were given, none of these discuss ramps, clover leaves, any of that. So I guess my point is, we can't make, if that's truly something that council is interested in allocating these funds to, we can't, I mean, this conversation, we don't have those numbers.
I think you were wanting to say something, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Just wonder, one thing I just wanted to emphasize is that this area's being more developed all the time. The, the new state building's gonna be in there, hopefully I'll be in there before I retire. And hopefully we can use that as a, you know, transportation. So I think there's gonna be more people using these streets and alleys and, and byways than we see now. I was always kinda frustrated with the city or with the, excuse me, the highway department going over the, the railroad bridge and build nice sidewalks that go nowhere. And I think we need to keep that in mind, I'd like you to keep that in mind as we, as we finish this. These need to connect to things and I appreciate the discussion about that. But before we do that, you need that, we certainly think you need wider sidewalks. Five, five feet is, is really minimal at all. And just as an example, if you go on F Street by Taco John's, you're crossing from the showboat to the Ramada, that's a, like a six-foot sidewalk, there's no guard rail, you're twelve inches above the, the roadway. If there's two people going in opposite directions, it really gets dicey. And certainly, we'd like to avoid that if at all possible. And there's lots of times when people are using roadway in both directions.
Carter and then Kim.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my hope is that, that YDOT is gonna make the connections to the pathways for us. And so, that, that would be what I would press them to do. Because the reality is, we've got a number of, of corridors that need to continue through their project. And so, I, I, I'm not sure that I would press them for a clover leaf or, or what, but, but making those connections as much as we can drive them to do that, I think, is something they have an obligation to do. And so, that would be my hopeful outcome. And, and so hopefully, we won't have to dedicate those kinds of funds to that kind of thing. As it relates to the trees and to the lights, and as you can see on the map here, the, the orange dots are kinda designated for lights that we would propose. The green dots, obviously, are representative of trees and so forth that we could put in. We, we have the option of saying how many and by what type of spacing that that would be made to happen. The one thing that I think is gonna be really difficult, if, if we don't do something now in the scoping of this project, is getting the infrastructure in place at the very least with regard to the irrigation and the conduit for electricity and those kinds of things put in as a part of the, the original scope. It's, it's very true that we can put the vertical elements up to whatever degree and number and volume over time, but, but that, that critical infrastructure with regard to the original installation, I think, is just, is just positively necessary. And, and so with that, just a couple things.
My thought, uh, just, I wanted to ask is, what is the city, what is your recommendation or what is Andrew's ultimate recommendation? You guys gave us a list, but where, where do you guys stand? If you don't mind me asking, care to comment?
Do you mind if I may, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, councilman, I think that's a very good question. I, I would like to take advantage of the offer that the trust has made with regard to getting some bump outs in place. That's a very appreciated partnership that I think getting at least two set at the very center is, is a great idea. I, I would suggest that if council wants to dedicate as many funds as possible to widening, to having ten feet on both sides, indeed, I, I would suggest that looking at only the infrastructure with respect to the trees and lighting along Poplar, the corridor, the Poplar corridor, is very, very critical. And we don't have that level of estimation for you tonight. I would also suggest that with respect to the lighting on the bridge itself is very critical. If we don't do that as a part of the original scope, we're likely not gonna get that in. And, and I really don't recommend moving forward without lighting at least on the bridge so that we have what you see on the, the overpass over the, the train tracks as, as a very minimum effort. If indeed council doesn't see the value in widening the sidewalks to ten feet on both sides of the bridge, then I would definitely say, let's put that into, to lights and trees. And with regard to the amount of money that's available and the volume by which that would be directed, we could, we could certainly come back later with that type of outlook.
I follow.
Yes, please. So, as councilman or a councilwoman has mentioned though, we could do, from the sounds of it, ten feet on one side, but you mentioned looking at ten feet on both sides, is that correct?
It's gonna have ten feet on one side.
Yeah, YDOT's doing it on one side, yeah.
They committed to one side, that's right.
Okay, so we would look at committing to the other side.
Five feet is what our commitment would be if council wants to go in that direction, one side of the other.
My, my question is, if you don't mind, Steve, when, when this goes out to bid, some portion, the, the lion's share, of course, will be paid by YDOT and then there's certain parts that are enhancements that we would pay for. If the bids came out so that, would, would it have that kind of detail where we would say, oh, the city's cost of this extra ten, five feet of sidewalk didn't come in as much as we thought? Would we actually have a reduced cost or would that all come in as a single bid and it would just be, our, our contribution would just be used one way or another?
Your Honor, council.
Did I say that in a way that made sense?
Yes, you did. And I imagine if we like to widen the sidewalk, uh, the, the, on the, one side of the bridge to, from five to ten, and we allocate four hundred and some, there we go, thank you, and I'll do it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And if the bridge comes in at five million or six million, it'll just be, that's what it is.
It'll just be swallowed up.
It's been swallowed up now, because that's gonna be part of their, of their contract. Typically, what we do with enhancements is we develop separate plans and specifications and we give that to YDOT and then the contractor simply gives us a bid for that enhancement. And so then we know exactly what our enhancements are costing. But on something like this, it'll just get swallowed up with the cost of the bridge structure. I, I don't think you'll see any savings or, or on the good part, any overruns necessarily.
Whatever they guessed it would be is what it'll cost, so.
We're still gonna get a bill for a half million to get the other five feet, yes.
Who was, Kristen, were you waiting? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think we could talk about the project all night, because this is a super important part of our town. But if we do the added ten feet on the additional side, along with the generous offer of the bump outs from the trails, then the lights on the bridge, that puts us at five fifty-one and our total monies that we can use for this decision currently is five eighty-nine. And those seem to be two projects that, the ten feet seems to be something that we can't go back and do. I am sure when downtown becomes what we know downtown's gonna be, we need the ten feet. And like Carter said, you, we have to have lights on the bridge. I mean, it's now or never, you can't go back and dig up the sidewalks and put the wiring and stuff underneath them. So I mean, that puts us at five fifty-one if you just do the ten feet and the lighting.
And with the, if I may, with the bump, bump outs at forty-five thousand dollars each, is that, assuming we would have to pay that much more to supplement the contribution from the trust? Or was that, was that if they weren't able to do it?
Mr. Mayor, that would be contingent on how many bump outs you want. If indeed you had two at center, as was described, we believe at this point in time that the hundred thousand dollars would cover those two bump outs, one on the west and east side.
And so we might do another one or two if we supplement it, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, if you wanted to, correct.
So then the forty-five thousand dollars would put us right about at the max then?
For two.
Yeah. But, but they would also do two more, so if I'm following.
In order to get more, council will have to spend additional two hundred thousand dollars.
And your honor, I would.
Then there's forty-five thousand dollars those two.
I would recommend unbalancing on one side. If you're gonna have one on one side, I'd have one on this side, not two on one side and one on the other side.
I think two is sufficient. Oh, I see, they're forty-five thousand dollars each, so, so it'd have to be ninety thousand, is what you're saying, I see. So then we'd be a little over six hundred thousand. So, uh, before, was someone else waiting? Uh, Steve?
Before, uh, Mr. Napier mentioned about the lights on the bridge, I would very much be in favor of basically light and tree as per plan from First Street down to West Yellowstone, which would be across the bridge, you'd have the trees on the north, you'd have a couple of trees on the south, but really not worry about the rest of South Poplar Street until, and that becomes then down the road as that develops. Because right now, that's all industrial and it's not really gonna help a lot. Now, as you get more and more traffic, if they start building, if they put a. if they put a, a convention center on the commons, then that starts bringing more people. That starts to become the time for the development of the rest of Poplar between Collins and West Yellowstone. But, you know, right now, it's just kinda, and that's, that's putting lipstick on a pig, so to speak, in that other part of it.
Now, Carter, Carter, I know you didn't break it down, but some portion of that four hundred thousand dollars would be needed to put that infrastructure in place if we didn't do the vertical pieces, right?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. Some, some portion of that four hundred thousand would be dedicated to the conduit, if you will, and the irrigation underground, so that indeed, when those vertical elements are affordable, uh, and doable, they would simply be tapped into what's underground.
So now our figure's getting a little further above the budgeted amount. Steve?
Well, and that was just what I was gonna say, is I agree with what Kristen said as far as the bridge goes, getting lighting on the bridge. To get those things in place with what's remaining, we, that infrastructure needs to be put in place so that when they do finish everything down Poplar, it's theirs. So when we can come back to it, we can install lights, we can install trees, and we have in place what we need, so.
So we have a deficit, we don't know exactly how much of a deficit, but let's just say one quarter of this infra- infrastructure, that'd be a hundred thousand dollars. If that's just a guess, then our, our total would be somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars if I'm doing my math right, and allocated five eighty-nine, so.
But, and here it shows it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the trees and irrigation system itself, so I guess that would be, I don't know, how much that would actually be the tree cost or the irrigation cost, but.
Your Honor, Councilman, the irrigation system was estimated at sixty, seventy thousand dollars, the rest were for trees, but that was to put it all in. I mean, if we just need to put some conduit across the street so that we have that connection, that's gonna be substantially less. I mean, just to run conduit across the street while they have it dug up is, is not very expensive.
I think Carter's got a suggestion. Let's hear it.
What's your other question? I didn't mean to give away.
I had a question that was gonna ask, so are the lights on the bridge then a part of YDOT's cost, or are they part of this hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, your Honor, Councilman, they're part of that one twenty-five. The very first item on the list was just for the decorative lights on the bridge deck itself, estimated at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Which, which we have to do. Okay, right.
Now, the other, uh, the other four hundred thousand was the balance of the lights that you see that are not on the bridge. So these lights, and then all those lights.
Let's hear it from Carter and then see if anybody else has comments, but Carter will be.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Council, we, we could certainly tighten up these estimates, given some of the coalescing I'm hearing around some suggestions, and bring that back to another work session and have you give us a thumbs up or down, or, or amend the, uh, the proposal, if that would, if that would help at all.
Well, I think we, based on what I've heard, though, the, the ramps and clover leaves are also a priority, and we would need to know whether, in fact, we're successful with YDOT taking those burdens on. So, Mike?
Well, what I was gonna suggest, if we're supposed to prioritize this stuff, uh, you know, the, the ten-foot wide sidewalk on the east side, on both sides of the bridge, that's very desirable. Uh, and I, and I would think that, that making that a ten-foot sidewalk there, that that should be a big priority. Uh, the, uh, the bulb outs or bump outs, you know, that is not, in my mind, quite as big of a priority. They're nice. Uh, and I don't mean to take away from the, the amenity, but if, you know, if we ran it, if we really had to start cutting the, the budget and being real tight on this, I think that the, uh, ten-foot wide sidewalk is much more important than, than those bump outs. And i- if that's something that you guys can come up with some extra funding to cover or something, you know, maybe that might work that way, I don't know. But, uh, uh, you know, the, the ten-foot wide sidewalk, to me, is just a big priority. The infrastructure for the, the wiring and the, the trees, like Carter's talking about, I think we need to, you know, have that built in there one way or the other. As an absolute fallback, if, you know, if, if these numbers were to really go, you know, the wrong direction on us, the, uh, you know, trying to talk YDOT into moving the ten-foot sidewalk to the east side of the street instead of on the west side of the bridge, you know, seems to me that that would be a desirable fallback on all of this. But, uh, that, that would certainly not, not be my first priority way of wanting to do that.
Well, Carter's suggesting that we give them a chance to crunch some numbers and come up with a proposal. Uh, let's get a, a show of thumbs up. Four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to do ten feet on both sides, it's a big chunk, chunk of change. How much appetite do we have for that as a, as a priority? Okay, we've got seven thumbs up on that one. And then, uh, and then at the decorative streetlights over North Flat River Bridge, I have a thumbs up on that as a priority, to, to light the bridge itself. That's unanimous, okay, so those, that goes in for sure. And then whatever the cost would be for the infrastructure along Poplar between Yellowstone and Collins, could we get thumbs up on that? Just to put the conduit in. Okay. And, uh, and then the city contributing to the bump outs because the trust may be able to afford two. And if we wanted four, we have to come up with another ninety thousand dollars. So, thumbs up for that. I guess, I guess I'm gonna go like this, I'd like to hear how we would do it. Could, could, could we get thumbs up to at least find out whether there's a way for us to incorporate that?
Out there, take it.
Okay, let's see, how many, we got any? I think that the bump outs, bump outs are losing. I think those are on your, your guys' shoulders now. Okay, so.
We'll take the burden and, and the heckle.
Now, Steve?
Would it be possible somehow, because I would be very interested in knowing the width of the sidewalk on the dam side of the new interstate they put over the Colorado River downstream of Hoover Dam? Because that bridge sidewalk is used quite immensely for people walking out onto that bridge to take pictures of the dam.
Oh, gosh, I think that's super wide, though.
Yeah, I'll bet that's. It isn't that wide, because you have to squeeze to get people by it.
Well, I can't see the Hoover Dam from there.
No, I've been there, though, and I have a feeling it's wider than ten feet.
No, but I'm interested, I'm interested in how wide they put that sidewalk in.
Well, I guess that's fair to go up and down if we wanted it to be twelve feet or whatever, but, uh, okay, well, let's, if you're, if you guys are okay with that, let's let, uh, Carter and Andrew crunch some numbers and come back with a proposal and see how close we can come to five, at five eighty-nine. And then, and then as this evolves, we'll learn a little more about, uh, YDOT's willingness to solve these bike path problems that we're concerned about because if they don't wanna solve them, some of that may also fall on our shoulders. Steve?
And I was just gonna follow up to that. If, if YDOT does not wanna do the clover leaf as has been described, or an entrance and exit off both sides of that, could we at least find out what the additional cost would be to do that? Because I think it's just a really safe way of getting pedestrians across the road, that happen across the road.
Well, let's bear in mind, they've, they've, uh, dedicated a lot of tap money to our trail system, and so they have a, they have a vested interest in making the whole system work, too.
One, one more quick item. There's, there's gonna be, uh, AMCO or BP is gonna be putting a slurry wall, uh, up to Poplar. And when they do that, um, right, right now, the, the current new pavement, actually, the current new pavement starts from here and goes back up to where they're going, well, actually, it starts up there, but this is not very far to hook to the ten-foot wide sidewalk on this side. That means you go through here and you're, you're literally on this whole trail system over here. And if you do it on the same issue with the ten-foot wide sidewalk over here, this is relatively easy to do. It's all, almost on great. So, it's, you know, that's what I'm saying, it's just, this is not like a half a loaf or no loaf. This is like three quarters of a loaf versus the whole loaf.
Okay. Well, are you guys, uh, okay with those instructions?
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, let's, let's move on then, and, uh, I agree, though, Kristen, that this is serious business and we've gotta do it right, and the time's well spent, so. Anything you guys wanna say as final comments?
No, appreciate your, your speaking. Appreciate the difficulty you face with.
Well, thanks for all you guys do. Okay, Meadowlark Park. I know we had a meeting last week. Carter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you are correct. Uh, we, uh, we did visit with the neighbors to the unimproved portion of the Meadowlark Park system, which, as your exhibit would indicate here, is kind of the lavender portion of, of the, uh, of the exhibit. Um, is that lavender, or is that fuchsia?
It's good to me.
Okay.
Salmon.
Okay.
Fuchsia.
There you go.
Red scripted.
Plum.
Lilac. Let's call it lilac. Um, the green portion is the portion of the system that's already developed, has amenities in it, and, uh, and, you know, is, is, is widely used by, by members of that community. The reason that we had the conversation with respect to the, the lavender portion of the, uh, exhibit here is because in recent weeks, we have had members of that community come forward and say, hey, what's your plans for that portion of the park? And, uh, you know, as you may know, there have been different iterations of the use of that over the years. At, at one point in the past, a chain had gone up on that, on that northern end there to prevent vehicular access and, and those kinds of things. I mean, so this, this has been a topic of conversation in various forms o- over the years. So we thought it'd be helpful to have that conversation, see what the neighbors thought. The, the neighbors were, uh, clear about two things. One, yes, they would like more maintenance and, uh, effort taken place on that lavender portion. Two, they also said they don't wanna see additional development with regard to, uh, portions of that park being sold off to private use or private development or whatever. Uh, the other thing that I think that was probably said, although not necessarily reiterated, is that indeed, if council wanted to make improvements, they'd welcome those as well. Although they were all over the board, if, if I understood Mr. Cortez's comments correctly, as to what features and ideas and sort of wishlist items they wanted to see in that portion as well. My, my suggestion to you, staff's suggestion to you, would be this. If indeed council would like to see a greater use of that lavender portion, uh, indeed, it's gonna take additional funds, obviously, to put in, say, a pathway or, or whatever to, uh, to connect that park from a usability standpoint to the developed portion of, of the park, a- as you can see here. But otherwise, I, I'm not sure that staff would recommend anything by way of additional playground features, athletic-type features and so forth, in that that community is pretty well-served right now with regard to what's available to them in very near proximity. Um, I, I would also say, kind of hearkening to a, a, a future conversation that you'll likely have, that this is probably not a good candidate either for a dog park facility. Uh, in that, um, I, I certainly didn't get that in the reports I received from the, from the neighborhood conversation, but I think there probably are other more strategic locations that you would wanna consider.
It's hard to get to.
E- exactly, exactly.
If you don't live there.
Right. And so that, that's our report. We're, we're open for feedback and input and direction, uh, whatever council would like to do.
Uh, just before we get into the discussion, this initially is kicked into gear by one resident talking about a greenhouse that, that would be on that property and that would have water provided by the city, essentially. Did that come up in these neighborhood conversations?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would say that with regard to individual conversations that I've had with some of the neighbors, that was an idea. I, I would tell you that if indeed a greenhouse facility is considered, it will likely eventually require staff's involvement to maintain that facility and asset. It will also require, uh, water infrastructure being extended into the area in question. And so if, if you do have that an inter- in, in, you know, of interest, be aware of the nuances that that includes, if you would, please.
You're relying on volunteers. Steve?
Was there any discussion about basically drawing a center line through there and sowing the haves to the individual property owners and, in essence, doing away with the park altogether and making that all private property to the existing homeowners?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, I happen to like that idea a lot myself, because it, it does then remove the maintenance concern and, and, uh, other obligations that the city may commit to on that piece of land. The challenge that arises is getting a uniform commitment from all the adjacent neighbors to make those sales happen. Because invariably, uh, what you get is some love the idea, some will say, eh, I don't want all that, I'd take a portion of that, and some will say, yeah, exactly, they'll give it to me, I'd be happy to take it. And I don't think we can, we can do that.
And don't we run into some problems as far as it being available to anyone who would wanna purchase it?
I think so.
You can't just say, you're the only person who gets to buy this.
Certainly those complexities would need to be navigated as well.
I like the idea, too. I guess we could ask them. Tell them what it would cost.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm guessing that when that was plotted and subdivided, that there was some, that there's some sort of requirement that, okay, you subdivide this much ground, this many home sites, you gotta provide this much open space and this much park space and that. So, you know, while that does seem to me to be kind of an odd, an oddball piece of property there, uh, you know, the city did accept it as a, okay, this is open space, green space, park space. I'm guessing it's, uh, zoned as a park right now, so you'd have to change the zoning on it to do anything, which of course we can do. But I don't think that'd be a very good precedent, just to say, well, okay, now, you know, years later, we're gonna go back and say, no, we didn't really mean that and didn't really want it. I, you know, I would say that that's a little bit of a case study in telling developers, no, you can't just take the oddball leftover stuff and call it a park and get away with that, but that's a different issue.
I would guess the amount of open space if it exceeds what would be required, given what's already been developed for that many, I don't know, for that many properties, but I saw another hand. Bob?
Is it currently zoned, park destroy?
Do you remember what that is?
Correct.
Yes.
It is, okay.
I think it must have been there in ten, a little bit.
So that, that would be another option to sell them.
To have that all be a developed part of all the reason.
The green portion's five acres, the fuchsia area is about three acres.
That's a lot of land, too.
And following back.
Let's, let's, Ken, Ken was waiting.
Talk, I went and talked to the guy that was talking about the, not necessarily, he didn't mention greenhouse to me, he just talked about doing a garden and the community, the people that live there do.
Oh, you're right. It was, it was more of a community garden, you're right.
Yeah, just do a community garden. And all he was asking for, my understanding is just provide water. The city just to run water in that section for, to help water it, and other than that, the, the people would take care of it, and they weren't even talking about race guarding. They were just talking about tilling it up then themselves and planting and harvesting, or whoever wants to harvest, harvest, um, regarding it. I'm not, I, I think you're right, though, it would turn out, city would probably end up having to take over that, but I'm wondering, and unless, you know, something like the college wanted to jump in or, um, food for thought because they got the gardens going, and maybe they wanna do something like that, and we could offer, but I'm wondering, what is the chances, what would it cost to run water through that and just put in, um, fruit trees that if people wanna go, anybody that wants to go harvest the fruit trees could just harvest those fruit trees? And that's, leave it at that. And it would add sometime, it, it's just a dead fill. The trees would just add at least something nice to it. Kristen?
I'm absolutely on board that we don't run into some situation where we have this complicated maintenance and this trapezoidal type of weird area that's basically people's backyard, like red piggins' backyards. I am sure that if we approach Wyoming Food For Thought, they would gladly take on the maintenance side of this if we were to offer this as a community garden space. That is what they do, that is their mission. They are very strong and prevalent nonprofit in our community who already does this. So I guess my point is, maybe we just kind of halt for a second and talk to them about, you know, is this an area of town that you'd be interested in, you know? Will basically allow you and the residents to come up with community garden agreements and whatever that may be, but you take care of it.
You have to have somebody to send the water bill to. And somebody to make sure it doesn't just lift on. So, Steve?
Well, another issue we've got with trying to turn it into a community garden is I think that resident was talking about making it his personal garden, so to speak. And you start bringing people from all over the community into these people's backyards, I think these residents are gonna be a little miffed about it. Because you have to open it up to the entire city, because that is city property.
It already is.
So any resident can go there, but most residents are not going there because it is not maintained, it is not a community garden.
Well, I mean, the residents were the ones who brought this up.
I said, did they just want it to be a deal?
Ken, and then Mike.
I guess I brought that up to you, Mister Cortez, about looking at Food For Thought, other gardens and maybe the college. Was that ever, did you ever look into that, I guess I'm asking?
Mister Mayor, Councilman, that is in previous iterations as the city manager discussed. It wasn't specifically with Food For Thought though, it was a different entity that was doing, that was looking at a garden greenhouse. That was beforehand, that was before I even had this job. But it just didn't get all the way through, meaning the complexities kind of overwhelmed them and they're like, nah, just weren't that interested. We can certainly approach any number of entities, but I still think you find those complexities when you get to kind of like, alright, let's get it done and get the gloves on and then, you know, sometimes you kind of get that. There's some issues that we're kind of wrestling with.
We could lease it just like we leased the soccer field.
Oh, absolutely.
A dollar a year or whatever we charge them for.
Absolutely.
Mike was waiting.
Tim, what's the topography like there? That nice flat ground, is it a gully?
It's fairly flat. It slopes basically from, it slopes up from the north to the south slightly, but it's fairly flat. You couldn't play soccer, football or anything like that. The lower portion is much more flat.
And the only other thing that I was gonna comment on earlier about the idea about selling it, you know, all those other homeowners in that area, I think they probably have some standing to mount a challenge to any kind of a sale of that, because they could sit there and even though they're over on this corner of the subdivision, wait a minute, you know, we really liked that there was more than ample, more than the minimal park space there, and so we're gonna mount an objection to that. So, well, that might be a sort of a desirable thing. I think that'd be a pretty tough thing to do.
Or I bought my property with the understanding that this. Bob, and then I think Steve.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how it works here. I don't think we've ever done anything quite like it. But I do know in the county, in Fort Collins, in some really, really nice suburbs that are not in the city of Fort Collins, they have some nice green parkways. It's paid for by their homeowner association, even though it's public property. And homeowner associations, of course, in Wyoming are self-administered, has nothing to do with the city. But if you get those people to form a homeowner association, they could certainly take care of that. But it's still gonna be public property.
And they would get to decide what happens with that.
It'd be the same issue as buying it. Some guys would say, no, I don't want to be involved. But that would certainly do it.
Yeah, I don't know how you form one after everybody already bought their property, because most of the time people buy property, they have to join the homeowner association, it's already there.
But there's nothing, I don't, well, I'd have to ask our statute guy. There's something that says you can't form a homeowner association post-construction, I guess if you will.
I think you can, but getting everybody to sign up.
That would be it.
Might be an association of one.
Because there's fees.
Everybody gets high.
And everybody else wants a free ride.
Yep.
Was anybody else waiting? Ken?
The one thing I was gonna mention, which Mike alluded to it as well, even though I brought up the idea of selling it, the five of us need to remember the firestorm we went through with the property at the corner of Twenty First and Outer Drive. Because that was a park, and you remember all of those neighbors that, oh my god, you're gonna do, or whatever. So I wanted to refresh your memories that exactly what Councilman Huber mentioned is exactly what will happen.
Running their dogs back there.
They treat it like it's their private property.
I guess I just want to propose that can we look at Food For Thought or the University of Wyoming's thing that they do at the Ag Building? See if they would be interested in leasing that from us and doing a garden? And see what it would cost to run water through there if they had an interest.
What do people think of that?
I would just make a brief comment of, if you've ever been to their community gardens, there is no concern that this is just gonna become a rampant, like, overgrown. People just throwing stuff in it and like, oh, I mean, they have these people sign agreements. There are certain plots that are community plots that anybody can come and take food from, that they maintain, that they keep weed free, that they make sure stuff is growing in. They know what they're doing. I mean, this wouldn't just turn into like an abandoned project where they'd be like, ah, this isn't fun anymore. Six months later, they just walk off and here we have this big old mess with all these like garden beds and things of that nature. They already have a bunch of these and they are all very, very well-maintained.
And that would all be in the lease agreement?
Yes.
Steve?
So I'd say at the same time that you're gonna go ask Food For Thought if they want to do that, I'd go back to the same group that you talked to originally and ask them what their thoughts are of approaching Food For Thought and if they'd be okay with having that in there.
Because if they don't, if they don't like Food For Thought, in my opinion, they would have to find, form their own 503CB.
503.
But I always get that mixed up. Again, so you'd have someone who's responsible, the officers and people who had some authority to say, you're not taking care of your plot properly, or you didn't revo, you didn't turn the water off, or whatever it might be, so that there's someone actually in charge. So, Ken and then Steve.
To follow up with yours, the main gentleman that brought this up, I don't know as far as the other neighbors, they weren't out, so I didn't get to talk to him. He just wants something done with that section. He doesn't care what, he just, he wants something done with it. So, and I did bring up University of Wyoming and Food For Thought, and he's like, I don't care. I just, it's wasted property and it'd be nice to see something done with this. So anyways, I did bring that up to him, that's why, but the rest of the number of neighbors.
I think this for you, Tim, is there anything that we're missing here? That, any other possible uses that we're missing that we're not thinking about that would be maybe more cost-effective?
Thank you for that question, Mister Mayor, Councilman. So I was kinda like the discussion that's going on here. Every one of those structures you see around that, that fuchsia colored area, kind of had different thoughts. I mean, I'm gonna encapsulate it really quickly for you. If you look at this photo, this homeowner right here, that's his garage. He's got a garage door that opens out to this dirt road that you see that goes through the middle of it. He would really like to see an alleyway that he could use to access his garage. But it's pretty self-serving, so all the other neighbors kind of go, I don't know about that. You know, I mean, but he did put another door on the other side so that, you know, worst comes to worst. But these people are really concerned about mountain vistas. These people over here are concerned about mountain vistas because they don't have a view of the mountain. There were people that said, do nothing. Like, we like it just now, don't do anything, because they're scared of what we might do. So I think that Councilman Kathy probably couched it pretty darn well. His example from a few years ago was kind of on point. That's why I'm here in front of you and Carter. We're kind of, if you can kind of help us direct, but I did promise them that.
Go through this again.
And so the Councilman, real point, we did promise them that we would do a follow-up meeting after this, meaning, what'd you get from Council, Tim? And we'll kind of talk about that, and I'm taking my notes and we'll take that to them. But really what they, at the very least, what they were saying, pointing to your question was, is they all agreed a little more maintenance would be nice. And right now, that maintenance consists of one or two times a year, we rough mow it. Just with the resources I have now, I'm willing to make that commitment to them to say, you know, we'll get around it four times a year, you know, so that we knock it down to, it's just not totally overgrown. And really, I think eighty percent of them would just be ecstatic with that. But we did want to get it in front of council because it's been lingering since nineteen seventy-nine. So with that being said, you know, I just, me and Carter just felt good. Get it in front of you, just so you're aware of it, how it is there. But they probably had about two dozen different ideas for the property. Now, if it is something that council would wish just to develop and dedicate some funding to, then we can go there and we can start really getting like a voting, if you will, or some kind of consensus that gets us from two dozen down to maybe five or six items and we get some cost estimates and we can kind of come back to like what you just did with the first tree.
I missed two more days of mowing.
I mean, that's fair of mine. It's three acres, so there's no community garden, it's gonna be three acres.
No, no.
It's gonna be a very small portion, which will leave us with the rest of this to deal with. So that might give us a partial solution. But maybe you're right, maybe if we did something with a small section of it and just mowed the rest, most of the people would be happy. Mike?
Well, and Mister Mayor, following through on that, I think that in terms of a community garden, that the south end or the very north end is probably where you'd be looking at for that. Because it'd be pretty tough to sit there and say, well, we're gonna put a community garden in that. Trapezoidal, I love that.
No, let's let them tell us what section would work best for them, right?
Yeah, I think we need to be careful if there's only one person that's wanting a community garden and eighty percent, or eighty-five percent, everybody just please maintain it. We need to be super careful to understand that, because I was on council at the time when that happened and it was not pleasant and it just turned into a big, big fight. And so, so I mean, understanding where one person is coming from versus eighty percent of the rest of the people that want it just maintained and keeping it nice. Because there probably are people that like it, their dogs out there and just let them run and so I get that. So I think we need to be cognizant of that and understand that the majority of the people, that people that we've been talking to just want it maintained, I think we need to be sensitive to that as opposed to one person that just wants a garden.
Why don't we just find out what it would look like and whether we could find somebody to be interested? And then with that, at the next meeting, we'll just say, this is one of the things we could do and see how many people like that idea. Okay, so you'll let us all know when that next meeting is. I'm sorry I missed that. I will try not to miss the next one, so. Thank you. Okay, any other questions on that? Well, let's watch a video then on open meetings law, which is one of our WHAM training videos.
Carter Napier with the city council.
Casualty. He's just comfortable.
So cozy.
A movie star.
I was hoping you wouldn't pick this one to watch.
Should always keep in mind, the municipal business is public business and that the public has the right to know how its servants are conducting their business. City or town council members serve their communities at a crucial place, the level closest to the people. Without the informed trust of these people, democracy is jeopardized. That being said, it is always the best practice to conduct the maximum amount of the public's business in public. In nineteen seventy-three, the Wyoming State Legislature adopted the public meeting law, which is better known as the Wyoming Open Meeting Law, Chapter sixteen, Article four of the Wyoming State Statutes. The Wyoming Open Meetings Law, which applies to all agencies and divisions of Wyoming except the state legislature and judiciary, defines meeting as an assembly of at least a majority of the governing body of an agency, which has been called by the proper authority of the agency for the purpose of discussion, deliberation, presentation of information, or taking action regarding public business. An assembly means communicating in person, by telephone or electronic communication, or in any manner that allows all members to speak with each other simultaneously. Proper authority would normally be the mayor or someone called upon by the request of two or more members of the governing body. For the purpose of means, the intent of a meeting must be for the purpose of discussing, deliberating, presenting, informing, or acting on public business. According to the Wyoming Open Meetings Law, all meetings of the governing body of an agency are public meetings, open to the public at all times. Exceptions to this rule are executive sessions. When special meetings are called, notice of a specific time and place must be provided to the public in the media, as well as information on what business will be transacted. No other business can be considered in this meeting. When an emergency meeting is required, all reasonable efforts must be made to provide the public with notice. In order to go into an executive session, the governing body must first convene a regular or special meeting, where a motion that states the statutory reason for going into executive must be accompanied by a majority vote. Executive sessions may be called for reasons to consider appointments, dispositions, or dismissal of employees, or salary negotiations, to select a site for real estate when the publicity regarding this consideration could cause a price increase, and for litigation, the governing body is a party to. There is no requirement for recording discussion, but for all meeting types, governing bodies are required to record minutes, even when no action is taken. This includes executive sessions, where minutes and proceedings are recorded but remain confidential and are produced only in response to a valid court order. If information from an executive session is otherwise disclosed to the public in violation of the Ethics and Disclosure Act, the member of the governing body who inappropriately made the confidential information public is subject to penalty and removal from office. Action means a transaction of official business of the governing body, including a collective decision of the governing body, a collective commitment or promise to make a positive or negative decision, or an actual vote by the governing body upon a motion, resolution, rule, order, or ordinance. No action can be taken by a governing body, except during a public meeting. Some governing bodies erroneously assume that as long as no action is taken, there is no lawful meeting. But meetings are not limited to a formal meeting. They include informal conferences or sessions with members of the governing body that are held for the purpose of discussing public business, whether a decision is made during that gathering or not. For example, governing bodies hold work sessions, presentations, or retreats where no formal action is intended to be taken. Under the Wyoming Open Meetings Law, these gatherings do constitute meetings as defined by law. As such, they must be preceded by a public notice and they must be treated the same as any other special meetings. A meeting may also include gatherings of members of the governing body who are in communication by means of a telephone conference or online discussion. Most legal counsel would advise against discussing business in such informal settings to avoid the appearance of illegality. Compliance with the Open Meetings Law is a serious matter. The best practice is to conduct the maximum amount of the public's business in public.
I thought Carter did a fine job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Glad it's over.
It's just, it's good to be reminded. So any comments or questions about all of that? I think, I think we do pretty well with all of this.
I think you should dress more casually more often. Like every Friday.
Good to know where these rules came from.
That's good.
Yeah, so, okay. Are there any questions or comments? We'll just move on then. Okay, code of ethics. Okay, uh, code of ethics and the social media policy. You gonna get us started with that, Carter?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, you bet. Uh, as directed by the council, um, we, we took the first version of the code of ethics, as well as the social media policy, and, uh, made some changes, uh, the changes of which you saw in your packets. Um, and so, really, the, the, uh, purpose tonight is to gain further feedback on either, and, uh, get ready for formal consideration whenever council would like to take that up.
I had a chance to look it over again. I think last time, people were saying they just needed a little more time, so, as you read through it, uh, what kind of things raised questions, concerns? Bob?
I, I guess it's a, a question about the ink, the language, uh, towards the very end, section two point six point oh seven, where we talk about consequences to public officials, uh, and employees. I, I just, that sentence just reads rather strangely to me, but I, you talk about public official or official. It looks like we've got, that mentioned several times in that particular sentence. Is it just me? When you read it, I'm not sure I want to rewrite it, but.
Anybody have any reaction or suggestions?
If you'd like, I'll just read it to you out loud. Violation of any provision of this act may constitute sufficient cause for termination of an employee's employment, or the censure of the public official or official, or the removal of public official or official from his office or position. Is that? Am I the only one saying that's a complicated sentence?
I understand it.
Do you? Okay.
It is, but all the way through here, if you jump back up one, it says public official, official, or employee. And I am assuming by public official, they're talking about the nine of us, the elected people. I would assume an official starts to become city manager, city attorney, potentially the judge, and then employee became everybody else. Now, that's the way I was interpreting that.
You didn't see need to define those, John, in the preamble?
And, and actually, it would be the, the official would be, I think, exactly right. So, in, in your, in your thought process, you're exactly right. Public officials would be the elected officials. Officials would be, though, people you might even appoint. So, simply on the party and zoning commission could be, that could be, you know, a pretty lucrative job, and so therefore, that's why we made distinction. And that's just kind of consistent with state statute, though you're right, the wording is operative best, but that, there is a distinction.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I, but, and then, John, looking on page, uh, the top of page four, uh, in the definition section, it talks about public official or official, means every elected or appointed, uh, council member and all that. Uh, are you saying that that language, uh, which does seem to me to be kind of stilted and redundant, does that parallel what's in the state statutes that way, or?
Mayor Council, in fact, it does.
Okay, so it's, it's still to, thus, we can blame on the legislature?
Well, I, I wouldn't go that far, but, but. There, there is a bit more of a distinction, and you have more levels of government at the state level. And so they made that distinction, and we, I just brought it down to, to the, to the, as it's tender to you.
Thank you.
Satisfying, Bob?
Yep.
Are there comments or questions about this? It's, uh, you know, having done this for a little while, uh, now, um, I'm aware of the fact that decisions made by a body such as ours are decisions that other people will live for, live with for years and years to come. And sometimes wonder, well, why did they do that? And so, uh, let's be sure that this is what we're looking to adopt, and, uh, give it careful thought and consideration.
Now, are we all?
Knowing, of course, that Mr. Henley does excellent work in these matters.
Now, are we also going to be talking about the code of eth, I mean, uh, social media, or is that going to be a separate discussion?
We'll do, we'll do one at a time, okay? Let's go, let's stay focused on, uh, on the ethics.
Mr. Mayor, I do feel compelled, because every single time that I talk to former councilman Laird, he begs me, he says, "Don't do an ethics ordinance." And I always sit there and ask him why. And he says, "All that does is get you in trouble. Just rely on the state statute." Uh, I don't happen to agree with him, but I have carried his message here, so when I talk to him, I can tell him, Dallas, I told everybody what you said.
You decided not to run for office, so. I mean, is that?
But I, I think he does have.
That's a discussion we can have.
Well, I think, though, that his, his point is two-pronged. One, it's what the mayor's brought up, that we need to be sure that we draft something that's, everybody in the future can live with and work with, and that it's not so broad and so overbearing that it can be used as a club and a weapon against someone. But, uh, you know, my point would be that I think that we do need to have something that clearly states, uh, you know, what our standards are, and if somebody violates our standards, that it gives us, it gives us, council, a ground to stand on when we go and, and say, you know, we're gonna, uh, you know, we're gonna reprimand you, we're gonna censure you, or we're gonna kick you out. And then, and I feel that every legislative body that I've been aware of, you know, they have the right to, uh, ultimately determine who gets to sit in that body and who doesn't. And, uh, you know, and can kick people out for misconduct. And I think that the, the council should have that, that, uh, authority and option in extreme, well-defined cases.
Well, the, the, the argument that has been made is that this gives five council members the authority to just get rid of somebody because they don't like them. Six. Oh, you're right. Thank you for that correction. But, but the people could band together and just get rid of somebody because they didn't like them, or they didn't like the way they voted. And, uh, personally, I think, you know, I don't, I don't agree with that argument. I think we are all in this for the right reasons, and we don't operate on the basis of those petty motives. And you still have to have strong justification for any action that you take based on this. What's, um, go ahead, Tadea.
Well, the other thing that, and I think Councilman Huber brought it up as well, is that he likes the idea of a code of ethics. Every business I have ever worked for has had a code of ethics, and I think by not having one in today's political climate, with all of the BS going on and everything, by not having one, some people will start to think and say that, well, you guys think you're above the law and everything else, and we aren't. We should be actually held to a higher standard than the law. And I think this is exactly where we need to be.
Ken?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just very, very quickly, uh, following along on what you were saying, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I particularly like in this is it says, violation of any provision of this act may constitute sufficient cause. And so I think that that is a safeguard, and a necessary safeguard against, well, there's five of us that don't like that guy, and so, or, or six of us, or seven of us, or eight of us, whatever number you want to put on that kind of a vote, that don't like that guy. Uh, you know, no, this says, if you violate this code, then you can, not, not just, well, we don't like you because we don't like you.
Ken?
Um, if I may, Carter, you were in Gillette. Chief, you were in New Mexico. And Chief, you were, I forgot.
Missouri.
Missouri? Okay. The places that you guys have been, and did they have a code and ethics, and does other places around Wyoming, uh, their council have a code and ethics? I guess it's, I'm just curious, the broadness of it, if you don't mind me asking.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Ebby, I can respond first. Um, there are iterations of code of ethics throughout the state. It, it's rare that those bodies of, of code include, um, dismissal provisions of some kind. Um, having looked at some of the code of ethics that are out there in other cities and communities, you see a mixture as well.
Anybody else want to comment on experiences? You were asking about our two chiefs.
Right, where they were, code, code of ethics.
Mayor, Councilman, I'm, I'm not familiar if we had one very specific to the elected officials. However, a code of ethics is generally a provision of any professional organization. Um, I am, I'm a personal proponent for code of ethics as a guiding foundational document of the organization.
Mr. Mayor? In answer to Councilman Bates's question, we actually had a code of ethics, and it was repealed between my exiting in sixteen and your coming on in eighteen. So there was a code of ethics that we lived by, up until it was repealed by the council between when I was last here and when you were elected.
Chief Silver, did you want to comment?
Mayor, Councilman. I've seen everything from, on the fire department level to city level to elected officials in all three states. It's, it's, it's a blend of everything.
Ken? Further comment on the language that's been presented to us, and, and that was, the, the code was, was, um, removed because of some of the language that seemed arbitrary and unclear.
And I think in that resolution as well removing it, it was stated that it would be revised and stated. So I think we are doing nothing more than following through with the promise that was made to the public at that time.
And actually, this language was proposed by Mr. Henley shortly after we, or as part of that discussion really as an alternative.
It was. I, as a, as a matter of fact, uh, we didn't even think about repealing two point six four, which is the fourth clause, and I attached that to the proposal resolution. And that even references two point six oh, because it was anticipated at that time it was a repeal and replace. And, and we had the, the version that, uh, Mayor referenced that on, on board to replace it, that that was voted down. And so, uh, but the thought process was that it would come back up, uh, and with a, a different council and some different members. And so, I think this is the time.
I personally like the way you put it together. I wouldn't, I don't, can't think of a way to improve it. But it, again, I don't want to be hasty about this, because it, it's a serious document. Again, the purpose is to give people guidelines, not to sanction people. Are we ready? Mike, do you want to say?
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask and wonder, and I, I'm kind of asking Mr. Henley this question. In the, where it talks about the discipline thing, violating this two point six zero point oh seven, uh, is it necessary that we put in there something to the effect, you know, putting some meat on the bones there about that, well, okay, in the event that you're gonna, uh, uh, that you're disciplining somebody, they have the right to a hearing, uh, they have the right to, you know, and, and any vote on deciding what, uh, action should be taken, should be a, uh, simple majority, a two-thirds majority, a double supermajority? Should that be in there, do you think, or do you, is, is that?
Any consider that, John, to talk about the process?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council. Uh, as a matter of fact, again, it goes hand in hand with that two point six four, which references two point six oh. So basically, two point six four, which was just the attachment, the information attachment to the, uh, the information sent to you, talks about the four causes and the process for doing that. And, and really, it's, it's, it's a decent process, and it, it, that was the process we made with you last time. Basically, two-thirds of you have to vote to bring in a hearing officer to have the hearing. The hearing officer makes a decision. If, if it's in favor of, uh, either the censure or the, uh, the term, or the removal from office, then, uh, the, the person who's going to be censured or removed potentially has the right to appeal. They can appeal to the district court, uh, after that. If it's upheld, and it comes back to the council, you still need two-thirds of the council members to either censure or, uh, remove from office. And so basically, uh, two point six four has as one of the causes, the violations of two point six oh, but also there are other things that can be removed, or convictions of another felony, uh, moving from their district, that type of thing. So, these are, uh, to be, and would have to be read, uh, hand in hand. And for that reason, you do have a, a pretty good process, which includes not only a supermajority by this body, and then a review by an independent hearing officer, which can be appealed to the district.
He obviously didn't read it hand in hand.
Uh, if there's no other comments or questions, are we ready to move to the floor with this? Okay. Thank you for your work on this, John. Okay. All right. And then social media policy, yes. If y'all had a chance to look at that, um, questions, comments, suggestions? Sean?
Uh, I guess, is there a? I guess what happens if you violate it? Is there a penalty, or is it part of the code of ethics, where people can, people can be censured or removed from office? I guess what's, what happens if you don't follow the social media policy?
We can talk about that. There really aren't any consequences outlined in this, are there, John? I don't see anything that, that tells what happened.
That, that would be correct, Mayor Councilman. Uh, I, I think that's a good question, though, because everybody should be on the, the same page. So I, I actually went kind of to great lengths to make sure that it, it would be potentially abusive, uh, kind of given the dynamics of social media and how people can kind of, you know, get hot under their collar and say something that they don't really know. Wouldn't stay under different circumstances and the like. Uh, so I think some of the cons, concerns, and I, and I think that, uh, Councilman Bates's, uh, uh, family were concerned about, well, can, is this gonna affect us in any way? Put in there specifically, it's not gonna affect you. Um, and, uh, with respect to this, it's just a social media policy. Uh, you can adopt it by resolution, and, uh, basically, it's there for your use, and it's the public knows where you stand. And then if any of you violate it, I guess you tap the answers to your voters. So, you know, either the mayor, the vice mayor could call a member that's I'd say, you know, could you kind of be a little more careful with some of your social media comments? We have this policy, and you'd like to have you adhere to it if you can. Uh, so, so actually, I, I, I re-put that, I, I get the memo, that who's, who's responsible for the application of this would be the mayor and the vice mayor. So, uh, just informational, uh, guidelines. It's something that you're adopting for yourself, something that you want to agree upon. So if, if you can't agree upon it, you know, maybe look for, you can't agree that all of the precision provisions are appropriate. It just seems like, given the dynamics that we see day in and day out, with people posting online, that this is something that you may want to be back to.
So, John, um, if one member of council was very concerned that another member of council was, uh, damaging the reputation of the city with inappropriate language, and that was, was causing harm with the misuse of social media, could that person then approach the mayor and request an executive session, so that the council could then discuss those concerns in a private session?
In, in an executive session, I don't think that we could do that. Um, like I say, is the mayor, uh, you know, you could say, I don't know, Councilman Smith, I, I think that, uh, you, uh, I, I've heard some comments about this. I looked, I looked at your Facebook page, and I, and I saw that you were using this type of language. You know, we tried to discourage the use of that, and we adopted this as a body, so that we can kind of be on the same page and maintain our, um, agree relationship with the citizens of the house. You know, however, if you were, or the vice mayor wanted to do it, that, uh...
That wouldn't meet the broad definition of personnel matter.
I don't think, yeah, your employees, you're the governing body itself, so I don't think you could say that it would be, uh, your policy to discuss, uh, personnel.
I, I guess my point is that I want to make sure we're not punishing people for using their First Amendment right to free I guess my point is that I want to make sure we're not punishing people for using their First Amendment right to free speech. Whether or not you're offended by it or not, everybody has a right to say what they want to say, period. Matter of fact, the First Amendment was put there to protect unpopular speech.
And since there's no punishment clause, you don't believe that we're in any risk of violating that?
You know, I don't believe that you would be. And again, unless, I can't think that you would be. It's out there, these are guidelines to, we would like to your organization to adhere to. You know, it's kind of like Boy Scout of. And if there's something that you want to live up to, you want your organization to live up to. But realistically, there can be violations potentially of this. Somebody will, even if it's not a violation, somebody will probably think there's a violation. So that's it. There's so much give and take back and forth on social media that it's going to cause more problems. And it is the cure. There's something to be said about that, I can't be bothered. But whether this would be advantageous or not, you'll just have to make that decision. But I don't think, the way this is structured, that it would violate the First Amendment rights.
Well, I don't know who was first.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. Because once again, former Councilman Lair jumped me about this. And I, what I represented to him was that this policy was a restriction on if we are posting something on the city's Facebook account or sitting here saying, you know, I represent the city and as a representative of the city, I'm telling you blah, blah, blah. That nothing in here is intended to restrict what someone decides to post on their private thing. I understand that there's some language that I think Councilman or Vice Mayor Johnson's pointing to. But is my understanding of this correct or, you know?
I think that is correct. Basically, you have your own personal ones, but you can write anything you want. If you're acting as a member of the council, then you should be basically speaking as a councilman. When you have confidentiality, you'll hear certain things in an executive session, it'll be confidential. You shouldn't be using a position as mayor to, or a councilman to disclose that type of information. So again, this goes to when you were actually posting or on a site. Councilman Smith's, or three councilman's site, and then your posting has the councilman. If you go on your own personal website with your friends and people that have befriended you, then you can reach Jeffrey Ray.
Ray, and then Steve.
The way I would like to see it is that it's just a guideline to help us to understand that to remain and be, we can express our points of view and express what we believe with decorum, respect, and understanding of different points of view. And if another council member or other people are disparaging a council member and saying negative things or things that are like that, I mean, that's what it is. And that, I think that's a reflection upon someone's character, frankly, if that's what they're doing. Because I've been the target of that for a long, long time and when I've been a part of other races, et cetera. And I think that's the definition of someone's character. And they can continue to do it because it's free speech. Unfortunately, that's the way it goes. But I would hope that we understand that there's a level that we have to rise above where we are now anyway, on a national level anyway, how we address and work with people. I think this is just a guideline in that sense. And that's kind of the way I look at it. Unfortunately, I agree with Sean in the sense that we can't control someone's speech on that sense.
Which paragraph were you pointing to?
The last one.
P.
Okay. That was, I mean, I guess my biggest concern, because I mean, what, what's the measure? You know, I mean, is disparaging of another council member, just if someone on the council is offended by what some other council member says? Is that, I mean, you know what I mean? I just, I mean, as long as there's no, I guess, teeth to this where you can censor or kick off a council member because you're offended by what they say, then I'm okay with it, I guess. But I just want to make sure we're not trampling on the rights of council members to free speech.
Steve.
Well, I think my question is more for Mr. Henley. I mean, where's the, I get being able to go on your council page and say what you want to say and then you worry about going to your personal page and having somebody take your First Amendment away. But I guess the point is, is that you're a council member. And at what point, to me, it doesn't matter whether I'm on a council page, I'm on my personal page, I'm on my business page, people know that I'm a council member. And so at what point does it, at what point are you not a council member to where you can actually have that, have an open discussion and say what you want to say without people looking at you? I mean, because we all, we all signed up for this job and as a council member, people look at you that way. Whether you want to say that that's, that's the case or not. I mean, every day of the, every day of the week until your term's done, you're a council member and everything you say, it's not a matter of jumping on your rights, it's...
Were you asking a question for?
Well, yeah, I guess that's kind of, where's that fine line at?
Yeah. And realistically, probably it's a little bit of an artificial line because a lot of people will know that you're a council member, even when you're voting on your own personal Facebook page or whether you're tweeting on your own personal Twitter. And so in that regard, you know, this policy, just to say, hey, look, when you're actually saying, I'm a member of the Castro City Council and this is or three councilman's site speaking for you, you ought to consider these type of things. When you're on your own site, no. If you want to raise heck with somebody and say, you know, that was the stupidest vote in the world, you know, you can be able to do that. You can probably do that on the council site too. But realistically, we're looking there to kind of raise the standard as opposed to going to the lowest common denominator. And with respect to Councilman Johnson's concern about P, I understand your concern about that. This was pulled though basically from Robert's rules of order. So just to try to pull some of the requirements we would have, you would have for a meeting because you've adopted Robert's rules of order already, but to put that into public context. And that would be an expansion of it, there's no doubt, because Robert's rules will apply during and in a session. But it's that principle that basically you shouldn't attack or disparage other council members. You shouldn't attack the terms or the vote that those people had or the ordinance that was before you. You can attack the terms of that and why it shouldn't have been voted that way. So articulate reasons as opposed to articulate disparagement. This is kind of the reason for that in the Robert's rules. And it's a question of whether you want to carry that over beyond these four laws.
Kristen was waiting.
I mean, I guess I would just say to me, these are best practices, I think, that they should be doing. But that's not my place to tell people what to do with their lives. But I think that's all it is, it's just best practices. We are all adults and we're here to be respectful. I mean, it's not like, not like the intention is, well, soon as I get to this meeting, I'm going to go rip me up some citizens. Like, that's not what the point is. You should be being respectful one way or the other. These are just best practices. No one's telling you what to do. No one's holding you, we're going to kick you off council because you crossed the line. We're just asking people to be respectful, especially when you're putting yourself out there as an elected official of the city. I think that's pretty okay to ask.
Ray?
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly what you said too, Kristen, I think that's a really good point to make. I think the other side of it is that if a council member did end up going on social media, whether they said something disparaging against us or a person said something so egregious and horrific, you know, it's really not, we can condemn it as a body.
Yeah.
And just say, this council doesn't stand for those types of things, but it's free speech and they can do that. And I would say that I think it's okay for a council, if somebody says something like that, would be something that was bigoted or racist or whatever it might be, that we could stand as a council and say, we don't stand for that and we reject it. But that doesn't mean we're not going to censure someone or...
Exactly.
Or kick them out or anything like that, just lets people know that this is not what this body stands for.
I'll just say this, for me, I agree with what Steve said because I think everything, I think everything that I do is known to be, that I'm known to be the mayor. And that everything I do reflects on the council and reflects on the city and can affect the fortunes of the city. And so I agree with what Bob said earlier, that we have to be held to a higher standard than the average citizen as far as how we conduct our affairs and how we perform in public. And so, yes, it is, I guess it's aspirational in saying, this is, this is the standard we should all shoot for. But to me, the distinction between a city site and a personal site is completely irrelevant. Because whatever we say, we're known to be a member of this council. And we have an obligation, in my opinion, to the public to set a standard for ethical and adult-like behavior. And should we sanction people? No, I don't think so. But I think we should try to all hold each other to that standard. That said, we also, I also know that we have had simply vigorous debates on the dais and been called as dysfunctional by the media just because we were having a debate. And we should have debates and be able to argue with each other about things without that being a sign of, you know, a government that's not working. That's what government's supposed to do. So anyway, that's my speech. But I think, I think it's important to have these standards and that, and it may not be a restriction of free speech, but we should hold each other accountable to a certain standard because it reflects on the city.
Mr. Mayor, I...
Who else was waiting? I didn't see.
I kind of like to play the devil's advocate here about something for just a minute. And Steve, with your permission, I'm going to use you as, you know, I'm going to say...
Steve Warner, too.
Yeah, well, no, listen. You know, this says that you're not supposed to say anything disparaging about a fellow council member or something. But, you know, being the devil's advocate, playing devil's advocate, what if I was to say, well, and Councilman Freo voted blah, blah, blah? And anyone that looks behind the scenes could, would know that, well, that's, he's, you know, he's on that side of that and that. And Steve, I'm just picking on you because you're here and an easy target. But I think you get, no, I think you get what I'm, what I'm getting at. That if you, you know, if you know that, well, you know, that this councilman's making it just an absurd thing or a dishonest thing or whatever, I think you should feel free to speak and bring that up. Now, those are extreme cases and I don't, you know, I know that Councilman Freo's been very scrupulous, in my opinion, at abstaining on anything that he even remotely has any contact with. But what if he wasn't? You know, what if there was somebody that wasn't? Is this supposed to be that, well, you know, Councilman Kathy can't say bad things about me if he knows that I'm in a, you know, in a bad position on something? I'm troubled by that. And I realize that this, this kind of doesn't have punitive teeth to it. But still, you know, I think that in those kind of extreme cases, you know, sometimes, sometimes it's appropriate to disparage somebody. Sometimes they deserve disparagement.
Sometimes it's holding somebody accountable. Now, Steve?
Well, along those lines, if it's something that you're violating principles or whatever, that comes back under the ethics part of it. As, well, this has nothing to do with the ethics part of it. That is under ethics and that's something that we need to be addressing here as much as anywhere. And what you should be doing if you're disagreeing with people, and it almost needs to be like the Supreme Courts, the appellate courts. You have a pro and a con. And so you can say that, hey, okay, this was the kind of the pro side. You don't have to mention names. And this was the con side. The council voted for. Now, however, my personal opinion was blah, blah, blah. This was on the dissenting side, however, as even as a dissenting member, and this would be my personal position, I need to support what the council decided because this is a democracy and this is where we need to be going. And that didn't step on anybody's feelings, it didn't disparage anybody. And you've told both sides of the issue and you've told where you stand and where the council stood.
Without disparaging anyone. Ken? And then we better move on, guys.
Yeah. Absolutely. I was going to ask for a...
Okay. Again, is everybody okay with this social media policy, given this discussion? Go ahead. You're still wrestling, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just a quick comment in response to what Councilman Kathy said. I don't, I mean, even if a council goes one way, it's a five-four vote or whatever, as a dissenting person, I don't think you should be obligated to support something that you don't, that you don't agree with. I mean, you could say, yes, this is the will of the council. And as you said, yes, this is my opinion on why I'm against it. But I don't think you have to publicly say that I support the council the way they're going if you voted against something. You know what I mean?
You voted against it, you know. Charlie and I were on opposite sides of the smoking ordinance. But the council said, we're going to go that way, so there's not much I can do.
Right, but you can still be in opposition to it.
But I am still in opposition to it. Exactly right.
Yeah, I think you're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, are we okay?
Yep.
Move on with social media policy? Okay. Good enough. Okay. Agenda setting for four weeks from tonight. Let's talk about next week's agenda first. And...
Four weeks from tonight's, are these set?
Concerns, questions about the September third agenda? Anything you want to tell us about it, Carter? Things that may prove to be, we may have some challenges left?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, with regard to the pre-meeting, there is another step that we need to take with regard to the property management contract that's coming up. And so that's all that is. It's not meant to be another opportunity for them to come back and give you another presentation. It takes twenty minutes or whatever. That's not the intent. So we're just trying to follow the process with regard to potentially renewing that contract.
Are there questions on items that we'll deal with next Tuesday? And if there aren't any questions, we'll move on to the work session for two weeks from today, which is already set and looks to be pretty full. Any questions about all of that? And then now we need to draft our agenda for the 24th. I will be absent for that meeting. And so this is where people can request that certain things be added.
There's a number of things already highlighted for that day.
Did we do the two one one?
We scheduled.
That is when?
September tenth.
That is on the tenth, okay, that's next time. So things for the twenty fourth. Down to earth.
I would say, I would suggest that we stick with the staff recommended items because I have a feeling that will be more than a full slate. Like, in a good way, like, I think that that would cover it.
Parking study, health department, that's a significant skate park. What's with the skate park? Do they want some funding for us to help build a skate park?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the skate park sits on Boys and Girls Club property. And in the agreement that we have, we have the obligation of maintaining. And so what we're suggesting is that that property be transferred to the city so that indeed the relationship between the ownership as well as the maintenance is more consistent and it doesn't create that disparity with regard to why is the city maintaining someone else's property, so to speak. That's really all that is. And that was actually the result of a conversation between, actually started by the Boys and Girls Club and they, at this point in time, seem to be on board with that.
No, that was controversial. And the safe project, could you remind us what that is?
Mr. Mayor, that is the entity, the body, if you will, internally, that is looking at ways in which the building, city hall ought to be improved, if you will, changed or considered for alteration, so to speak, to make the building a little more safe and... to, uh, to make the building a little more safe and, um, uh, deal with ADA issues and, um, present itself in such a way that it doesn't make, um, the building more prone to active shooters and, and those kinds of things. So, it's, it's just ideas that we wanna bring forward.
It's a very accessible building.
Very, very.
So, okay. So, let's have some work on that.
Yes, sir.
Opinions on, and then the finance policy space, too, is just some information you want to present to us on?
Yes.
How, how we handle our financial affairs?
If, if you remember, Mr. Mayor, we had a whole litany of, of, uh, questions we wanted to bring to you with regard to financial policies and so forth. So, we're trying to work our way through that list in phases, so it's not some massive, major work session dedicated to that concept.
Just fix some things that maybe aren't as updated as we should.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay, so that, do you think, now, does that look like a full
Mm-hmm.
work session then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else that's gotten, anybody's really anxious to add? And then in two weeks, we will see what we want to do in the first work session in October. So, okay, anything on legislative review? Uh, we do have a, um, committee hearing this week. The Minerals Committee is actually meeting in Casper College. If anyone wants to attend a committee meeting, um, it is the sixteenth, let me get my schedule up here, just a second. It's the sixteenth and seventeenth, and I actually have, and you can always call the agenda up, uh, that's on the state website. If you, if you just Google, uh, Wyoming Legislature Minerals Committee Agenda, it'll just come right up and you can see what they're gonna be talking about. So, that is, um, that is Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, all day, at the Casper College Gateway Building. And it's a lengthy agenda. But they're talking about some very interesting things. They're gonna be talking about air service, uh, they're talking about the Sage grou- grouse problem that we keep reading about. This is where these decisions are being made. So, anybody that has the time or interest, uh, that's coming up. Anything else on legislative business that you can think of, Carter?
No, sir.
Um, we are gonna be hosting the WHAM meeting and what, what date did we set that for?
Do you remember?
WHAM regional meeting?
The regional meetings, what the date is on it?
I got it, it's the fifth.
Okay.
Fifth of September. I wanna strongly encourage people to come to that. Quite frankly, it's almost a little bit embarrassing that I'm the only person that attends these because other coun- other councils will have, Land, Land or Riverton will have three, four council members attend. Pavilion had more people than Casper, okay? And so, uh, i- i- the, the agenda is, uh, it's really just kind of a roundtable, uh, what's going on in your town sort of thing. And this is WHAM's effort to try to have, uh, a way for people to communicate with each other without always having to travel to a meeting in Cody or Cheyenne. And so, try to have these things be a little closer to home. It's a rare event for us to ca- to, to host them because we are the easternmost representative of this region. And so, we are not the central location to meet. So, for us to host this, uh, everybody has to come to Casper. And so, again, I think it's imperative that we have some representation there.
One-day meeting?
It's a half-day meeting. It, it starts at three o'clock and it's actually gonna be up at Hokonopan. Uh, great, great chance to meet some very good people who are doing some work similar to ours. And you'd be interested to hear how the, the challenges intersect with ours. And sometimes they're doing something very different and, and the exchange of ideas can be very helpful. And you just feel like you're a little more part of what's going on in the state of Wyoming when you have a chance to meet with people from small towns, other larger, larger towns. So, uh, that's my pitch. I, I hope as many of you can come as possible. And meet some great people. Uh, anything else that you can think of, Carter, on that front?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, thank you.
Then, uh, let's go around and if anybody has anything, uh, do you have anything to tell us about, Ken?
The only thing is, I got an email from this Johnson Thompson, or Josh Thompson, which I think you two, Vice Mayor, Mayor, that you received, regarding that they would like City Council to look at enacting the Green River Ordinance, which helps, um, alleviate, uh, solicitation and put, I guess, more teeth into that. We do have an ordinance that's already out there to, to a point, uh, re- that talks about solicitation. It more discusses about business soliciting than residential. But that, it's just something that, um, this gentleman asked if council would be willing to look at. I'd like to send the information to you, Mr. Hamler, to take a look at, uh, our entire conversation regarding it. But, other than that, that's all I have. So, that could always be added to the list if people were persuaded that something we should talk about. We put that on our list of potential work session topics if we wanted.
I guess I'm not quite sure what's kind of solicitation is he talking about? Like, to businesses, to presidents, or?
Um, anybody, uh, he's talking about, um, people just coming and asking for money, to Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, to, um, what else? Religious, just anybody door-to-door soliciting things. Um, he has things on his door that says no soliciting, but people don't follow that, um, as far as that goes. He did not realize that our ordinance does, uh, cover that to a point.
I love somebody's coming to your house.
Yeah, your house, sorry.
But it says no solicitation.
Yes. Yes, so, um, yeah.
So, why don't, John, would you take a look at it and see if you think there's some holes in our events? And, and then if, if there is, if, if we get five people that want to put it on the list at some point, we can, so.
So, I'll board it, all to your good.
Anything else, Ken?
No.
Um, so, obviously, we hear a lot about the Endow Committee that's at the state level that economically needed diversification of Wyoming. Um, and they kind of look at initiatives for that. So, they actually have a branch or a subdivision, I don't know how to explain it, that's called Engage. That is basically a similar type structure, but for people sixteen to thirty-five. And we, luckily enough, are actually hosting their annual summit here in Casper this year. So, I'll be there talking about civic engagement for people between sixteen and thirty-five, eighteen, thirty-five. But I guess my point would be, it's not just relevant for that age group, it's actually relevant for everybody. It's just that those will be the typical individuals that they're targeting. So, you can, um, they're calling it a contributor if you're in the age group. But you're more than welcome to attend it as an observer. It's obviously a free event and it's a group that has a lot of pull with things that happen at the state level. So, we're very lucky to have it in Casper. And it'll be at the Yellowstone Garage on September seventh. Sorry, I think I said ninth.
Seventh?
September seventh.
Saturday.
What's the group called, Christian?
Engage.
Engage.
Yeah, okay.
It's not the seventh Friday, it's a Saturday.
Saturday. But just throwing that out there for anybody who wants to attend, I think that that's a very, very important group as far as their feedback gets back to the places that it needs to be quite easily.
Could you forward that email?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Anything else?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Steve?
A couple of things. And there are things that I was asked about, is at the corner of Thirteenth and McKinley. Thirteenth Street is a one-way going east. Thirteenth Street is closed. Is it possible to get the north-south a flashing yellow and the east-west a flashing red? So, you're not sitting there at a red light when there's gonna be nobody coming from the west? It's something to be looked at, but that's, that was one. And secondly, I got a call from a gentleman who had had their vehicle stolen and it was then taken to the impound lot when a resident had called and said, hey, there's a vehicle been sitting in front of my house for X number of times. And so, it was then towed to impound. Well, the individual whose vehicle was stolen went to the impound and found out to get it out, he could only use one towing service, he didn't have a selection. And secondly, he didn't have a key to the vehicle and they wouldn't let him in with the locksmith to make a key for the lock so he could drive it out.
Oh, 'cause the person who stole it had his key?
Yes.
That was a bad day.
So, well, he got it, well, he was lucky he got everything back in the truck. But anyhow, um, he was concerned that he was out a hundred and five dollar tow bill because, and he was told which tow service to get, he couldn't shop around. And it didn't matter whether they moved it two blocks just outside the fence or whether they towed it all the way to his house, that was the flat rate price. And that he couldn't let the locksmith in to make a key for the, for the vehicle. Is that typical policy? And I guess, I realize you're here, but technically I am addressing our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd be happy to look into that further, but, um, let me see if I can find out more facts about that whole thing and get back to you.
I appreciate it.
If that's all right, yeah.
Yep, nope, that's fine.
Sure.
It seemed like it would correct, fix a headache for the towing operator and let somebody in to get a key and drive their vehicle onto there. Anything else?
Yep.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got, I've got one item, and it's not, not really a council item, but it, it concerns some things we're dealing with with the opportunity funds. You folks are gonna be going back and meeting with them with, on opportunity funds. And as some of us may realize, that these opportunity funds that are gonna help us out in Casper are basically for people that have capital gains, that they want to invest in, in given projects. And if you stay invested for ten years, the capital gains tax is forgiven. Well, being an old guy, I've got what are called IRAs. And you have to take out a certain amount of money from an IRA every year or it has a fifty percent tax charge on it for what, for things you don't make with your required minimum distribution. I wonder if it'd be something at least to bring up with our congressional district to say, okay, once you reach the seventy and a half and you've got to start taking money out of a conventional IRA to treat it like what's called a QCD, a qualified charitable distribution, in which case you can make a qualified charitable distribution to any really good organization, being typically charities. And if those, if those charities are on the up and up, you can take that as part of your required minimum distribution off the top and therefore, you save that tax on that limit. My suggestion would be, why don't you allow people that have to take an RMD to invest in things like the opportunity funds? And there are funds out there that are literally available. And it counts the same way as what it would for a QCD to a charitable organization. That would put, I mean, when I started panning into this twenty-eight years ago, I knew I was gonna have to take it out and pay full income tax on it. However, if I'd have known then what we're gonna do with, with QCDs, I may have left it in the market because then I wouldn't have had to pay capital gains tax. And so, the people that are in a position of taking money out of their IRAs that are required to take it out are at a real tax disadvantage. And it's something that I don't, I've never heard a word from anybody in Congress about that, but.
That's 'cause I'm only like one CPA, but, you know.
But yeah, if, if you're giving X amount of money to a church, you can take it, as you're saying, directly from that
That's right.
and take it directly to the church and you don't wind up paying any income tax on it. So, that's a, that's a before-tax write-off.
Oh, yeah.
You might wanna write the case down, Bob, and you could send an email to KADA and, you know, just make the argument. Because the opportunities on regulations are now in place. But there has been talk about revisions and, and things that they didn't get quite right. So, who knows, there might be some opportunities.
Well, should you be sitting down with any of our congressional folks?
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Ray?
Nothing.
Mike?
Nothing.
Steve?
Nothing.
Sean?
I just have a citizen complaint I want to forward to Carter later on, but it's nothing else other than that.
Well, um, I have to chide you all for missing the Bishop Home Tour because we had a bunch of people say they were gonna go. But, uh, I, I did get a chance to go through that and they're, of course, very good people and they didn't ask for any money. I found out where the word Codoma came from. It was the name of the ranch run by the Bishop family, uh, north of the airport, a sheep ranch. And it's a very cool building. And, um, uh, I, I don't know if there'd be another opportunity to do a tour at some point, but, uh, obviously, they have old events open to the public and it's just a, a good resource, something probably we should all know about. But, uh, they're very gracious and, uh, and, uh, again, it was not an ask. It was, there's no arm twisting, it was just, I thought you might wanna see this.
I did it last year when I was mayor, did the tour and it is, it's a cool little nugget. If you haven't been to it, because I had never had my whole life and it looked just really sad. But I got invited when I was mayor to go over there and make a, to talk about, they were doing something. And it is a really cool house and, um, just kind of that rich history of Casper, so it's really cool. So, I do encourage you to go.
One of the Bishop's daughters was born, the, the house was built in nineteen oh eight, she was born in nineteen oh nine. And she died living in that house in the, in nineteen eighty-something. Never left. Never lived anywhere but that house. So, anyway, uh, we need to get into an executive session then, if there's anything else. Um, so, uh, let's, uh, so, uh, let's see, we've got, we, 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 well, we just go out there. We can start.
We, we can do it here.
We can do it here, okay, all right. So, I now call the August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen special council meeting to order. All council members are present. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding litigation. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session and at the conclusion of that executive session to reconvene this special meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this special meeting.
Subtle.
Second. By Councilman Pajekro, second, by Councilman Freo. There being a majority of members present and a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say nay. Motion passes. A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned to executive session. And we're gonna talk about some-
Let us get the cameras turned off and-
Okay?
Red roll.